So we're at nine?
Yes.
It is six oh three when you call the meeting for order. You would all please join me for the public audience. Pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, to their opponent for which it stands. I guess it's just a physical government in this struggle. Great. So today is our Maywork session. Andy is on the online currently and would like to join the meeting remotely. For that to occur, the board has to agree to it. Promotion for someone to allow, a promotion to allow remote participation. So moved by Gigi. Wait a second. All right, and as we have remote participant, we have to roll call everything.
Yes.
Okay, and speaking of work session, there won't be really many actions, but as a roll call, Gigi.
I.
Yeah, yes. Me, anyway, so Andy, you can vote to join, but you're already in.
Sure, I'm into it. I like it. Thank you.
All right, so Andy, Andy can see us, correct?
Yep.
We can't necessarily see anybody, but Andy can see us.
Kristen can see him, but he doesn't need to be seen. He just has to be heard.
So seen, heard, but not seen. So Andy, at any point, if you need to jump in, just speak up.
You got it.
All right. Okay, that brings us to public comments before we get going on anything. Do we have any public comments?
Stay over here.
Sure. Or you can come up where I'm with you.
One more.
All right, Greg Whitmore, North Grove. So I'm here to ask to end the mystery of high school choice and get some information on what's been going on with it tonight. So as you know, I'm a proponent of getting away from Concord High School and getting much closer to home. So I ran a Google Maps today and I can either send my kids fifteen minutes to Co Brown. Like I said, my kid twenty-three minutes to Pembroke Academy, or I can send my kid forty-five minutes to Concord. School rankings came out, brand new high school rankings. Co Brown came twenty-fifth in the state, Pembroke Academy thirty-ninth, Concord all the way down at fifty-five in the state. So the state rankings are based upon things like graduation rates, college preparedness, AP courses, so on and so forth. So it's not like it's like a popularity thing. They do have a number of metrics that they go by and it's based on actual data. So I don't know, sending my kid forty-five minutes to a school ranked fifty-fifth in the state, who seems to get themselves in the news for reasons that aren't great, you know, a bit too often, that doesn't thrill me to say the least. I emailed the board spreadsheets a couple hours ago. And basically what it is, I just lined up Co Brown versus Concord courses. So this is, you know, anybody could just pull up the course catalogs, but I thought people might appreciate seeing, you know, it's a different dynamic seeing the courses literally laid out next to each other. I tried to do equivalent courses right next to each other in the listings. And from what I see, I mean, the Co Brown curriculum seems to be vastly superior to the Concord curriculum. Typically, when people talk about Concord and their experience, the first thing they bring up is, well, the kids have CRTC as an option. So, you know, that's great, but then when we look at what CRTC offers and then we look at the Co Brown, you know, Co Brown courses, Co Brown offers pretty equivalent classes across the board to match what's offered in CRTC with just a couple exceptions. And then we look at all the other courses that Co Brown offers and it really, it's not even close, right? The other one that's always on my radar, of course, is Pembroke Academy. And, you know, Pembroke Academy and Concord's general courses are rather similar. And Pembroke has the option to go to CRTC and it's much closer. And the enrollment is a lot lower and they can certainly easily absorb, you know, all of Deerfield kids, no problem. So these are things that I just want to make sure that the public is aware of. And, you know, I think if we really look at the data and we compare, you know, apples to oranges, we can see that, you know, Concord is, shouldn't be the direction we move forward in. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional comments from the public? We should see none.
Yeah.
We're at agenda review. All right.
We need a non-public on the K and C tonight. We need to enter number five as appointments and resignations, then we can go to turn up to six. And I have last count numbers. I think one of those tonight is work session, but I know you were interested. If you want to put those up somewhere, anywhere somewhere, I'll give them to you.
Yeah, sufficient aboard. Want to talk about bus numbers? Seen changes, got that one in effect on Monday. So we are transporting sufficiently.
I'll just bring it forward to the next agenda unless you wanted it.
You guys want to hear it tonight, Charles? Uh, I appreciate it. Start it for you.
Perfect.
Okay. All right, so that brings us to some building expansion conversation, which is basically a lot of what's going to be a kind. So I think the first thing we have is we have some members from the expansion segment here. And we kind of wanted to have a debrief with the members of the committee that were able to come and kind of discuss what, what occurred, what worked, that didn't work. And I think what we're leaning towards is maybe a process going forward. I'm going to lean on you, Gigi, a little bit, how we do process, because this is certainly something that you had some thoughts on as well. And so four members are comfortable with it. I think we have three committee members here. If the committee members want to come forward or grab a seat or however it is, we can pull up a table. If you guys want to join us around the room, we can do that.
I'd love for the last thing, just to be with us.
So if you're willing to, great. Don't want to, great. But we can kind of wrap the end of the conversation so it's more of a, that would be awesome. And I think at this point, Gigi, if you're comfortable with it, I'll turn it over to you to lead the charges.
Yeah, well, I mean, we, Jeff, you can help to work together for quite some time. And we're getting a lot, we've been really interested as a board to get important feedback. And I just thought it would be good for us as a committee to really kind of, you know, in terms of, you know, yes, for DCS, kind of work with it. But you guys who are really not on the board, but giving us important feedback during the whole process, how would that go? And now that you've had some chance to kind of like separate ourselves from, from the process and, and kind of like be past the outcome, I just thought it would be a good time for us to take a look back and see, you know, what, what went well that we thought went well? What are the things that were challenging? And I think maybe what I'd like to do, give me a second, I'll pull up, I think I have an email. Can I email you with some questions? And I'd just like to pull that out because I think I'd like to try to organize that conversation in an organized manner. So if I could, if you want to talk with yourself.
I just don't have much to say.
Oh. Do you think I'm true?
The introduction. I'm doing business thinking.
Yeah.
I considered my, at least, I was just gonna say, I recommend, I, introduction would be great.
Sure, Barbara Cook, for Creative Feature, background in architecture. So I was asked by the principal and I do whatever she wants.
Jeff, and I was only trying to please Jeff Kelly.
Sina Sapiro, I'm mom and she'll remember. I want to listen to that. That book could be used by Jeff.
My, you know, your parents and several kids at school. Yeah, just, it's, I do some construction on the outside and I might be able to help out with the process.
And also on the committee was Jeff Mackey, who's the facilities director, former.
Stanborn?
Hampstead. Hampstead, thank you. Hampstead, uh, school district, who was able to be here tonight, but his facilities experience with those schools was quite helpful as well.
So we, well, Gigi's going to gather her thoughts, obviously, we all, we all experienced the outcome of the election. We had just under twenty percent. Or in favor of the, kind of the project as it was presented. So I think a big thing for us, a couple of things I think there is, I think the board heard some feedback from the community that they, I don't think the community was fully cognizant of the work that went into the subcommittee and kind of how that got us to the point where we're at. And so they, it seemed like the community wanted to be more involved in the process. And I don't, I don't know the best way to kind of engage the community because it's very difficult to get community engagement. But I think the board, the last meetings has talked about really, as we progress this project forward, what a lot of work has been done, but a lot of work, a lot of the work going forward is maybe we should try to do it at the board level in these work sessions so that it's easier to access to the community. I think we're also cognizant of, you know, we've asked a lot from a lot of volunteers. It's obviously very. I don't think. Obviously, I'm happy with the election. Certainly appreciate it, but it takes time. All right, Judy, you want me to?
No, I just don't have trouble connecting to the internet. I got there.
I just want to. This is Andy. If I could just jump in, I only heard about ten to twenty percent of what you just said, Zach, because the audio didn't come through. I don't know if that's because of the doohickey or my own setup, but I just wanted to call that out.
Andy, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Strange.
I was using my inside voice. I'll use my outside voice. All right, you ready?
Yeah.
All right, let's go.
All right. So I guess I just wanted to start with, because it's always kind of good to start with after you do that amount and the buckle over. Like what, what do we think went well for the committee? And definitely things went well. It could be things about the process. It could be things about the way that we, you know, in general, but I, I kind of wrote in that email, like, in spite of the outcome of the vote, what successes did this committee achieve?
Visibility. I mean, part of the thing we have an issue with is getting the message out anyway, right? Unfortunately, you don't get it out until the vote, ninety percent of the time. People don't come, they don't participate, but that's known, right? So that's not something that we, it's not something we should plan on. You don't plan on a bunch of people showing up here because they're not going to. We need, we need, we need to be better at getting the message out as we go. But I don't see, I know, I know it can be disappointing seeing the vote, but not least disappointing, I mean, it's, you know, it's just a step in the, in the process, right? Because now a lot of people know about it, what they saw was a price tag and what they voted against was a price tag. Anyone had the option to have a free school, brand new, they're going to take it. What they don't want is that giant price tag. What they don't know necessarily is the condition of the school, the condition of the, the equipment that we have, the condition of the repairs we need to make all the time. They may not know that and the message I just think needs to be delivered. And it's not going to be by pulling people in here because I don't think we're going to get people to come here. We've got to figure out a way to get the message out other than on the day they vote, because on the day they vote, they're going to see a price tag and vote with their wallet. And that's what I think we saw. I think the process of development using, you know, La Valley, I think, I mean, those, you guys did a great job. And I think, you know, going through and looking at the school, looking at the repairs we needed was very thorough. Like I mentioned, when I, when I started, I do construction outside, they did a great job, right? They do what they, they were supposed to do. They called up the things that should be fixed and need to be fixed. You know, some of the wants, some of the needs, some of the haves and haves, and then we made decisions based on that, on what we thought would be best. But we got to, we just have to get that information, right? We picked a design, maybe that isn't the right design. You only know when people tell you adamantly, this was not the one we want, right? But it doesn't mean they don't want anything. It just means we need to figure out how to get that discussion going with people and get their input and then find out what it is they do want.
Thanks, Mike. Or did you have anything you wanted to add to what, what you think went well for the committee?
Well, we all got a lot. I think we were all cognizant of what was going on. Agree with a lot of what Michael was saying. I mean, even, even without COVID, it's hard to get people in the building. But I felt, I was blindsided by the price. And I wish before we brought that to the boards, we needed to do more homework. I was embarrassed when, when the price came in that much. And I did not say, even, even based on everything we were doing, I didn't think it was going to be that high. And I felt that our hands were tied, that we were given the price pretty soon along with the schedule. And we had no options really, other than to present what we had because we didn't have enough time to cut it. We didn't really have enough time to look into grants and, and other ways of funding it. And I felt that it was a little short sighted of us to present this huge thing that forty-five million dollars and people just looked at the price tag and, and said, well, we can't afford Taj Mahal. So I think based on the schedule that we had, we were kind of up against the wall when we got the prices. But I don't know how, I mean, it would have been nice to know a little bit ahead of time that what we were proposing was that much time. Because I, I, it really caught me off guard.
Time is definitely hard to be.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. And I, I'm wondering, I don't know if we, for any all intents and purposes, should explain how time was even being.
Yeah, I mean, so we begin that design process, you know, a year, we begin the entire process a year in it. Half prior to the vote, approximately, but we had to hire the architects, right? Built that RFP. By the time we had La Valley, got the iteration in front of us and picked a design that we liked. Then we had the construction manager come in and it was right around the Christmas holiday. So I mean, it was right around the Christmas holiday that we got that price tag. And by that point, of course, it was definitely out of the barn and we couldn't go back to the drawing board and pick a different design, reprice it. So to get that march vote definitely was a, not as desired a situation for us as a committee. And the one concern I share apart was that now we, we gone out there with the forty-five million dollar price tag created that reputation that, you know, we're going to have to work against whatever price tag we come back at when we go back for a bond book. So, you know, we get the survey results, it was interesting and confusing at the same time to kind of look at that information. There's a lot of people that you have, price was just, you could see was the common theme, but I'd say it was trying to weed through all that, the different responses and the different questions. I felt like price was, you know, less than fifty percent of people, price would seem to be that big factor. It was, I don't know if everyone's had a chance to review it. It's kind of confused, I guess, for me.
There were certainly some, in the survey, there was some stuff that honestly contradicted itself, but it was almost like, it was, it was interesting to try to reconcile those all to say, right?
Yeah.
And that's why I was just going to say, like, I, I, and I'm not, I don't want to shut that conversation down, but since we have the survey data on the agenda, I think we'll just kind of, we can just stay. I mean, if that, if it's.
Part of this focus.
The conversation.
Deep down inside.
I think that, and Jeff, you kind of like brought us in. I just, I just wanted to recognize successes. One thing that I thought of is that the task that the board, the whole board gave the committee was to please bring a plan to, to warrant. And that, that was a success. A plan was brought. It may not have been the correct plan, but the committee was given, given that time crunch to bring something to, to warrant.
And I think, I think outside of, if you take price out of the equation, the, the plan and the proposal was brought forward was the best one for the education of our kids, right? It corrected all the deficiencies in the building. It corrected the space concerns. It fixed all of our problems. So if you look at it from the optics of what's the best for our kids, if we're going to, if we're going to fix the deficiencies in this facility, I think that absolutely was the best way for us to address all the facilities deficiencies. Part of that becomes, does the community want to support that level of correction? Or do they want to support a differently, say, corrections, right? But what we asked for was, I mean, we fix the building's deficiencies, we fix the site deficiencies and.
Put that in the session. Yeah, that's, that looks good though.
But how do we fix all of those things? And so I certainly think what was brought forward by the committee was absolutely best plan for the kids and for the educational experience for the students. I think what we need to assess now is, is this a community that wants that or is this a community that wants something else? So I think probably a greater question.
That's where the communication thing comes in, right? I think transparency is a huge thing. We want to do something in town. And I think it was transparent if anyone had come, like, again, I, I, you can't force people in here nor what I want to or expect it. And the, you know, working community is going to be a certain size. Once it grows, it becomes actually harder to actually get anything done. But once you come up with ideas, you've really got to be able to socialize that. And I think, you know, when you look back, we were, we were under a time constraint, but we always will be, no matter what, right? If you try to go to the next, you know, meet the next bond or whatever, we'll be rushing for that one too. But I think, again, communication is the hardest thing to do in a town this. And getting that vision out and saying, does this work for you or do you want something else? That's, that's what, that's the hardest part, but that's what we need to do to succeed, right? We're going to be able to say, you know, this is probably what the price tag is going to be, this is the design. These are the pros and cons. Are we good? Or do we want to talk about this? Or I, I think we do a lot of things good, but there's certainly things that we need to do much better. And it's just so hard to communicate, like, how do we do it in this town? Because you're not going to get them on Facebook. You're not going to get them all on wherever the town tourism board is. It's just hard. That's, that's the problem, I think, that needs to be solved, that's the thing forward. Clearly, we hear voices, you know, when the election comes, right? And it's typically always the same voices. And whether it's for or against, it's always the same. And, and that's fine too, because you need to hear those voices. But we really want to get as much input from everybody, because once you start including the mass audience, then that's really what's going to change perception. And perception becomes reality. That's where you get, that's where you're going to say, this is what I want. Like the town wants this or they don't, or they want to, you know, a different version of it, I think. I just don't know how to solve that communication.
So just, I'm going to do last call on successes. And then it feels like we've kind of segregated into like what were the challenges? And we may have cleaned that up as well, but any last successes that anybody wants.
Yeah, I think, I think I just liked to reiterate one of those first points that we got more people to the polls for a town election than showed up in a long time. So people are aware of it now, right? It may, it might be that, that might have been the most effective way to actually get people's radar, but now it's there and people know about it.
Hey, success can be seen as, nobody can say they didn't know that this was going to go.
And yeah, people are upset with that, but I honestly, I'm not upset with the election. I'm like, okay, well, you got a lot of feedback. That's good to know, right? Now people are talking about it.
So we've got, you've got the attention of the community, right? Like, okay, something's going on and maybe that will help drive them to tune in a little bit more and, and dig a little bit more and ask questions sooner or earlier. Or maybe that'll, that'll help some people to maybe become more involved. You know, what I hope is that, you know, a future project, that involvement happens sooner. So that it's not after the ballots are printed and after delivery session and after everything's already done. Because once that occurs, it's, that's it. That's what's going to march. But, you know, maybe this next time around, there'll be more of a sense of urgency from the community participating in the process.
We can't rely on them feeling the urgency. I think what we're hearing also is that we have to be a little more proactive.
Our problem is all the.
It's, it's not, we can't, we need to, we need to put it in their faces a little bit more.
I agree, because the public doesn't really know the urgency, because I haven't been in the building in a few years. So.
The errands is young again.
Yeah, so just what, what you're saying that, you know, we, we haven't had people in this building. They, they don't know, they don't know what's going on. Don't know how much of in the boys' bathroom changing things, doing things and putting diapers and, you know, I think this, it's falling apart and people don't realize that.
Some of the feedback to the survey, and I know it's another item, was, like everyone said, trying to get people in the building, trying to get either pictures out if it's possible or videos. So those, I didn't think that sort of information was, was lacking.
Thanks, Andy. So we've kind of talked about what, what some of the challenges were faced, the time, the communication. I guess a tiny little bit of slant on that question is what made it difficult for the committee to do its work and what might we have done differently?
As we think back to the timeline, there wasn't a lot of time and that was what it was. But, but the, the window we're talking about where the three proposals came out and then we made the decision to move forward, taking that time and stretch, I think, thinking back, if we had more time, that would have been the time to stretch out a little bit and take a month or two months to actually go out somehow into the community and find people to talk to. And I don't know how to do that, but that's where I think we could have had that initial feedback. And, you know, if there was a rough price tag or approximation or something, then get some initial thoughts before we actually crystallize something to put onto the ballot.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea. I mean, the time was against us. And I think, you know, they, they put up the cards and things like that right before the election. But I think once we have some ideas, really got to circulate those before we say we're going to move forward. Before we bring, you know, get that, get that input and be like, okay, we are significantly off course. Let's correct, get a little, little portal, little starboard, whatever we need to do to, because it's every, it's everybody's school and everyone has the input. You know, there's a lot, the, the hard part, and I keep coming back to this in my head, is how do we communicate when they want to get their feedback? But that's, that's the challenge that we have to solve, right? And then get that input. But take that time to correct, right? Take that time. Once we think we have an idea, let people know what that idea is and be like, hey, does, does this suck or is it good? Tell us. You're going to tell us eventually, right? I'd rather you tell us before we vote.
That's my biggest concern and frustration, personal frustration of this is the thought of spending any more time on it and just spending another year, two years on it, to have that same exacting at all. And it was like, that lack of input and involvement from the community. It was like the whole time we were doing it, it's like, yeah, building expansion committee, building expansion committee, nobody showing up, nobody showing up. And it's like, all right, are we going the right way or, you know, it's not that feedback. And to put that much effort in and then to just have everybody suddenly have an opinion at the ballot box, that's my biggest concern with this going forward is that we repeat the same in act.
Yeah, it's a, that's a good thing. And I like that you say that. One of the things I noticed, now that I have kids that I bring to sports, it's a similar thing, right? Like, we're not going to change that because how many people volunteer to coach kids?
Same.
Seven, seven people, same one year after year until they. Seven, seven people, and say one year after year until their kids are out and they drag someone else in, right? And then everyone has an opinion once the game day comes on who's playing, what position, all that. Which is, it, it's completely understandable and it's something that will never change. And I think that we're gonna, we'll always have that. It's, it can be discouraging if you're on the committee, if you're on the board and you do that. And, uh, as you just, every now and again, you just gotta take a step back and a deep breath and be like, that's just part of this process, because we can't change that part of it. And you might do it again. It might turn out the same way. I, I don't know. I, I think the, the smart thing that we're doing here is saying, what, what can we do better and try that? Give it a shot. I don't know. Who knows? Maybe we do end up with the same results, but, you know, it, it, it will be discouraging no matter what, when you're on this end and you're putting the work in. I know you put a lot of hours in after hours, things like that. I know a lot of people have, and that, that's, that's tough. It's, it's, I don't think that'll change if, if we move forward on this.
Um, and that, that's like, I, I have a wonder, like, I, I keep wondering, kind of a combination of what the both you, you were saying, Jeff and Mike. And my, my wonder is, and it goes along with that question, the cha, the challenges that were faced, is that there, there are almost challenges that, um, that we couldn't, um, they, they seem a bit insurmountable at times, because the mechanisms, the way in which the town used to work and the mechanisms that were in place that allowed the people in the, of the town to work together are, are not there anymore. You know, we used to have a town meeting, so we, we, we had a town meeting. And when we had a town meeting, I, I'm not trying to play, oh, the old fart is going bar, 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 wow. I'm just saying that that mechanism is gone. We're used, we were used to sitting in a gymnasium face to face with each other all day long, eating sandwiches from, for the eighth grade fundraiser. And with our kids sprawled out all over the floor with each other all day, looking each other in the eye. We might have sat on different sides of the gym, listening to each other talk at the microphones. We had a way that we worked together. And we communicated and we knew that when we left, we might be shoulder to shoulder with the person that just, you know, we had this humongous disagreement with, but on the way out the door, it, it would be like, oh, no, my car won't start. Oh, I have jumper cables in my car. And meanwhile, they might have decimated you at the microphone, but they wanted to get their cables and they jumped your car for you. Um, those things are working. We talked about the spaghetti dinners. We had those townwide spaghetti dinners. The entire commu, people who did not have children would come, many would come to those dinners and they would be here. When we were working on the first, um, talking about years ago, building a high school, nine hundred and some odd people were in this gym together. Nine hundred and some odd people were in that gym together. We own land, because after the first vote, a bunch of them left and then we bought land. You know, but we knew, we, we had these mechanisms. Those mechan, I'm not saying that we have to go back to those mechanisms. I guess what I've been thinking about is, I've been thinking about Eric, Eric Gross sent us um, an idea about like the town and the, and the school working together. And maybe what it is, and I, I have no idea. I, I don't know if I'm being Pollyanna-ish. And it's just the way of the world right now. And everybody is just kinda like, I'm in my track, I'm in this track. My life is too busy and I'm not getting down to it until it affects my wallet. We could be there and I might be being Pollyanna-ish. But I, I have a wonder that do we need to invest as a town into reevaluate? Not just what does the school need, but who and what do we want to be as a town? Do we want to continue down these parallel roads of not really, you know, being able to hear each other, to see each other, to be with each other and recognize, you know, to, to light up Facebook and say awful things about? Is, is that the town we wanna be? Or do we wanna be a different town? And is that process going to mean that we hire somebody as a town to come in and we go through either a charrette process or some other process that puts us back on, not what kind of building you want and not what kind of police station you want, but what do you value as a town? Like, what do you value? And then if it's clear that nobody gives a crap about it, okay, that's clear. And then we all have a very clear directive and message and know that's where we're at. But there is a piece of me that feels like, if we may have to come up with some wildly creative mechanisms to put us back in a situation where we're simply not calling each other stupid names because we don't like the things that we, we are thinking about, which in reality, every person is thinking that they're acting in the best interest of their children. Every person who's come, every person who's come and said, hey, let's fuck. Have been like, I am here because I'm acting in the best interest of my children. And every one of us who is like, put them back on, has been here because we've been working in the best interest of our children. So I feel like if we could figure out how to get down to deep, more deeper, what we value, cause I'm not sure, I am not sure that we can get out of these parallel tracks without going to a deeper place. I'm not, I'm not, I'm not so sure of lesser price tag, a different bill. I don't know. I'm not so sure. So anyway, that's, that's my little rant as well.
No, I like it. I, I appreciate Eric's email. My question, you know, it, and I think it makes a lot of sense for both this process and the town as a whole. I don't know, you know, the mechanism that you're referencing would be a town meeting versus, you know, just a straight ballot vote. That'd be the simple one, which is. But.
Yeah, we probably won't get that back, but.
But, you know, how to engage the town at, at that level is, it's a great question. And I think you and Erica both onto something. I just don't know what that looks like, you know?
But I think what we may need is help. I think there are people out there. I think there are organizations out there that, that we could, we could. And when I say we, I don't necessarily mean it has to be a, a board thing, cause I, I hear Zach go like, hey, we got a job. Our job is to like, take.
I say that, absolutely.
Yeah. I got, I got you. And I get it. I just, I just don't know anymore. Like, I just don't know how successful we can be without a big fat reevaluation of where we are, like all four thousand of us that are here and, and what we value and, and where we're at.
I think, I agree. What I struggle with is, we spent five weeks trying to get responses to a survey. We've published, plastered and everything we could with the trust of responses. It wasn't on a ballot box. We got thirteen, not four, uh, sixteen hundred votes at the ballot, sixteen hundred votes at the ballot box. We get a ten percent return rate when we go to ask the follow-up questions as to why. And I think there is a very large sentiment that social media has ruined a lot of things, right? And so I think what happens is it's very easy to be, I'm gonna just grab my, grab my information off Facebook, off Twitter, off whatever, and I'm gonna get my little snippets and just get my little cuts, my little bits and pieces. And then I don't have to engage. I don't have to, I don't have to go look. I don't have to think. But you can, you can get sucked into this path of inaccurate data, right? It's so easy to believe one thing, because I read it on Facebook. Facebook isn't a news source. Facebook is the opinions of whoever is writing whatever is being written. I don't know how a town can go back to a town meeting type of environment without going back to a town meeting type of, right? I don't know how you can get four thousand people to communicate together. I don't think you, I, I think, I think unfortunately those days are gone. And I don't wanna sound like a pessimist, but.
You do.
I, I, one hundred percent, but, I mean, for.
I'm not trying to be dismissive.
No, no, I, I know I sound like a pessimist, but I just, I'd love to say, yes, there's a way or a mechanism to try to get all forty-six hundred Deerfield residents to communicate together.
I don't think, I don't think you look for the, the communication of the school or this and that. I think you just gotta lift a, if you wanna bring the town back, you just get to that level where you're speaking. You get into town events. You bring people up for something else and they talk. That's, that's where it is, right? And then, then you start talking about the things that are important to you, cause that's what you do. We haven't done that in a couple of years. And there's no doubt that social media makes it easy to hide behind, you know, an iPhone or whatever, Android, whatever you want to have. Hide behind your phone and say whatever you want, but that, that's not gonna change, you know? The only way I think you get around what you guys are talking about is start doing things as a town. Like, you gotta, but town's gotta do that, right? The town's gotta figure out what events we're gonna have, what are we gonna do? Aside from Deerfield Fair, which is like twenty thousand people, if you like.
Deerfield Fair just for voters.
Yeah. I'd rather not have a Deerfield Fair. And I wonder why we didn't have one. It was wonderful.
It, it may not be us that comes up with that idea. I'm not saying that we as a board have to come up with that, that idea. I, I'm saying that maybe what we need to do is reach out to other organizations who specialize in, in community organizing. Maybe there's a group at UNH, those types of things. Like, maybe that's what we, that's what we do, because those, we may, there's only, I mean, I'm, I'm not saying that we're dummies by any chance, but we, we have a certain amount of collective brain power here in the room. But there are people that specialize in those things. And yeah, it might cost a little money, but in the long run, it might be something that is very helpful.
Do you mind if I jump?
I'd love to put your chair right on up here. Yeah, please.
I want you left out.
Yeah.
That's why I don't, it's in the background. I don't want him to see my face.
Plan New Hampshire. Do people know what Plan New Hampshire is or have heard of Plan New Hampshire?
I have heard of Plan New Hampshire, but I don't, I'm not specifically, uh, familiar with its work.
So they're just a nonprofit organization who goes to different communities throughout the state. And they work with the community, trying to poll as many people from the community as they can to poll them to figure out what's important to that community. And try to figure out how future growth could happen in that community. So there'll be a charrette, where they'll try to get people's input. And it's, it's not just specifically schools, not specifically fire stations or police stations or anything. But it's just to understand what the community's values are. And that if there's potential for park space or restaurant or whatever that community thinks is important for their hub, they can begin to deliver and master plan the ties to that. And that's just a, uh, organization that's throughout the state. That might be something that, that sounds similar to what you're doing, not just the school, but more of what the community values, not at all.
Yeah. Thank you. No, that's great.
There's certainly a lot that has to do to start reinvesting. Just in school, investing in fire, house, or police station. Really, we need some more parks and rec space. There's a lot of things this community should be doing to better itself. And some of us are comfortable with that. Some of us aren't, so. Here's your how to work through it.
I think one of the things we should probably do is, you know, to get the ball rolling and the conversation started is reach out to the select board, the planning board, to start this conversation and let them know that we're willing to, you know, engage in whatever form or format it looks like, but.
Somebody has to take the lead.
And the, the master plan is, is starting, right? So it is the planning board, right? It sounds like, who is starting this conversation in some way.
Can we get them to, if I leave the group to take the charge and?
It could be. I still haven't had one of our first meetings, but I'm, I'm the rep on that. But I, I haven't met you yet. I don't know when, I think it's happening the next month or so. I think it's imminent. I will bring this up and I'll learn more about Plan New Hampshire. I'm looking for options. It's great to do.
Right, um, I did wanna just talk a little bit about, and, and, um, I, I certainly don't wanna, we were kind of looking at what were the challenges that we faced and what made it difficult for the committee to do its work, what might we have done differently? I, I wanna kinda switch gears a little bit and then we'll kind of work back in, um, to kind of like takeaways. We, we'll work back into that. So if you feel like, oh, I forgot to say something, it, it will work back in at the end. But I guess what I wanna ask is, um, what was your experience like as a group member? What, you know, like the actual process of working together in, in this group? What went well as a group member? So I'd like to start with that. What do we think went well?
I thought it was a really great group. It was, there was a lot of diversity and a lot of different expertise. And I always felt like if I didn't understand something, I could turn, if there was somebody there that was gonna help. Um, so I thought it was a really diverse group. And I thought it was a very high functioning, honestly. I've been in a lot of groups. Um, and I thought it went really well.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think we were able to get a lot done. Just, everyone go along. Again, it wasn't, I had to say real competition. I'm like, I came in with a goal, just trying to figure out what we needed to do. And like you said, they wanted different experiences and different skill sets. And I think everyone was able to listen and, and, and then obviously take your guys' advice and, and, you know, we moved things pretty quickly. Help people want to do their work, get things done.
In the beginning, I, I really appreciated Jeff, you were, um, you got really like laser focused on the timeline. And, um, really did a great job, I thought of, like, okay, I'm putting out the, I'm putting out the Google Meet, here's what's happening. And of course, all of this while navigating COVID on top of it. So I, I think that that is not to be forgotten as well. And so I, I really appreciated the leadership that you took on that. Other, what went well?
You know, I, I, I thought it went, you know, I was very thankful for everyone's help, cause I, you know, no idea, you know, leading a committee like that. And it was great to get all that input and involvement. And I think back to, you know, one of our last meetings where we had to, as a group, decide which plan we were gonna go with. That conversation is still so vivid in my head. You know, looking at, you know, a plan like this versus the plan that we ended up selecting and talking through and figuring out, you know, we all knew at that point that that was the biggest and going to be the most expensive plan, but as a group, everybody arriving at the decision that, yes, this is gonna be the most expensive, but this is also best long-term for DCS now. I'd say, it wasn't the, you know, the right plan. But that was probably the most challenging part of that entire experience was being the decision makers for what plan we were gonna go with. I mean, I remember, you know, we don't work in the school. One of those stuffs, but you know, it was, it was a very challenging. That was, that was the hardest part. I heard about the entire thing, selecting that, that final plan and saying, all right, you know, we need to make a decision here. How are we gonna make that decision and arriving at it as we did? In a thought process. And that's the type of stuff I wish I'd gotten out there in that thought process, could have been communicated better.
And I'm gonna jump back to that, but I'm gonna, I just, I wanted to, to stick to like, what went, what went well. Does anybody?
I just had one other thing that popped into my head. I think the commitment of that group, I don't remember, there were, everybody came. You know, that's very unusual that everybody came every two weeks to that meeting. And you never had to say, well, so and so is not here, we can't finish that piece, including our architects. I mean, that, that was amazing having you guys there from LBA. I mean, every expert we needed was at that table at every meeting. And if somebody couldn't be there, they were remote. So I think that's really commendable.
True.
Yeah. Well, well, we started our work on Zoom.
Yep.
We, we, this committee started his work on Zoom. And it would took quite some time until we got to in-person meeting. And I guess I would add, since you brought up the architect, that, uh, I know that I really appreciated, once we got to the point where we were in the kind of process that you guys jumped in and helped us with the meeting schedule and also the invite and, and a, and a really beautiful, tight agenda. Um, because we were meeting every week in that hour. We had so much work to get done in that hour before we then jumped into the school board meeting. So, um, I just, I really, I think that went really well. And you, you guys were just instrumental in kind of like moving that process forward that Jeff kind of started to commit us all together in the first.
I think it's important to recognize. I've been sitting here, all of there as a board member, then everybody else, they post something, but there was a, there was a lot, a lot that was done to try to get this big snowball rolled, let's say, to the top of the hill. And, um, the amount of work that was accomplished in that fourteen years period was, was monumental. We spent years getting this. Getting this, getting this like started and researching data and looking at stuff, I mean. Tons. Four years, five years of time prior to this, really trying to get.
Yeah. Prior to hearing study, the demographic study, base study.
Where are we? How are we doing? What's going on? And, you know, the committee took a lot of that information, but I mean, it really. It takes a lot to get. That that hole down the hill. I mean, the amount of work it is, especially. The confines that you're in when you're, when you're doing it, you know, municipal level. It's not like in the private sector, you're like, I want to build a building. It's thirty million dollars. Okay, go. You know, there's a lot of stakeholders and there's a lot of of people and groups that really need to put time in just to get to the point we got to to get something done valid. And I think the committee did a phenomenal job of accomplishing the goal, which was to. Get the the right option forward. And knowing how much work it took to get to the start of that process. Think what the committee did was 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 unbelievable. There was a tremendous amount of work done. And it was done efficiently and effectively and it was credited that way that was involved. As as well as it did.
Thank you, Zach. Um, last call. Thank you for.
This last call.
How the group went well? I think it. I think it was a pleasure coming in because we all. Like we, I could ask a stupid question and. No one would say, oh my gosh, how come you don't realize that? Or explain it in such a way that I would understand it. And I remember Patty. You were looking at some of the stuff that they gave us and and I just looked at your expression and you just kind of went like this. I know, I'm a flat piece of paper.
And it was new to the building.
I and I and I just remember over here, it was a good question and um, just um, you know, looking through some of the the things and and just asking some basic questions when you uh. And Lance could like just. You know, really, really kind of explain things to us. I think it was nice too because we were all diverse. We, I mean, even though I have a background in architecture, muscle working in a building. So I had another perspective. And yes, what we came up with was really expensive, but I feel as a teacher and an architect. Background, I I think it was the best solution for what we were proposing right now. And I, I don't know how it would have changed if we found out a couple of months that it was that much money. I don't know if we could have looked into different ways to fund it, to have more information for that night. Um, but I think what you're saying, I mean, we, in a year's time, pretty much, we came up with. We vetted nine, nine firms. And then three. And then actually came up with a viable design before we had to. So I think in in what you're saying, I think, yes, we we did quite a bit in a short period of time.
A remarkable amount, short period of time. And again, having been. Trying to get the snowball started. For a number of years and getting a lot of kind of pre-work done to get to that point. I said to Jeff a couple of times was you, as the committee was in the process, I was blown away at. The the ability the committee had to get the work done, the quality of the work as we were seeing at the board level. It was remarkable. So. Again, I certainly appreciate it to everybody involved because I know. How much work. It takes to get that done. It is a tremendous lift. Certainly. I don't at any point want anybody to feel like that that's losing value because it certainly was. It was a huge lift. For me to.
I wanted to just um, and unless somebody has a burning one, I would, I would just close out with. I really appreciated. Both our all of Kristen and Patty and Barbara and Dora work on it because. You are in the building and you you could have clear explanations for this, these are the issues. Uh, and uh, so I just, I I know it's a lot of extra time commitment and just really, I I think the committee really appreciated. Having your, your on the ground expertise in in the process. It was so important. And then, and then uh, just to extend that one ring out further is, and and I hope this gets back out to the staff, is really the amount of energy and time. The staff and the students took to give Levalle all all of that really important feedback that allowed them to come up. With this design that would try to meet the educational needs, not not just the functionality of what. What needed to happen in order to fix the systems that were, you know, that are failing and are still failing, but also really to try to look at like. This is where education is moving in the, in in this century. And these are the things that will really help us address. Um, and 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 be able to shift and change uh, this. You know, the the movement we need to make in in order to elevate. Our students. It's not that we're not doing the best we can, but we don't have the resource. I mean, again, I will point to Forbes all over the place. I'm kind of excited to see this touchscreen on the, on the wall, but.
Hey, for like a brand. Brand touchscreen.
Thank you, thank you. You know what, Gigi, I think that's part of what my communication is that. Education is so different right now and people looking at these plans, what's, what's this here? Why do you need this? Cause we're used to, a lot of. Parents are used to being in one room and and you're not, you know, you're not working together. And I think. Part of, part of educating our town is educating them also how um, education has changed. Since this building was built like. The sun where where the first class is here and it it's just different right now and and that and that's all part of the education process, I think.
I mean, certainly, and that that is something that you probably heard. Uh, to a certain extent from feedback as well. They don't eat this, they don't eat that.
Yes, yes.
Well, but really they do, right? Because because education has changed, a lot has changed and. You know, when I was in elementary school thirty plus years ago. It was different than it is today. We sat and rose to the classroom and we started to talk board, but that's. That that wasn't the best way to educate back then, but it was the best we knew. But now we know more. We know there's just better ways to educate children, better ways to give. Really drawing them into it. But can't, can't put around, you know, square pegged around, oh, you need to, need to. Remold everything in that in that process to really maximize the potential of of these methods and. Yeah, educating. Certainly think that. You do the best you can with what you have, but sometimes you're hindered by, at some point, it becomes a a bit of a hindrance and. Actually from really maximizing. Everything.
Yeah, I think that's actually a really good point. Something we probably missed was. Discussing that because I mean, we're dealing with. Parents that still don't understand why we changed the grading system, right? Very frequent basis. It's like, why aren't my kids getting A B C?
Exactly.
Or they're correlating one, two, three, four, right back down to A B C D.
Yeah, and and that's, I mean. I I think it's incumbent upon us when we do take another, another apple to discuss what education looks like on a daily basis for the students. Um. We're really a generation away from. Are these kids, you know, understanding that because. There are parents that will never understand what, you know, constantly based education and. That grading system and we're not going to be able to educate all of them, but if we, it would. You know. We'd be foolish not to try and explain what the average day looks like for a student, where, you know, that's something we should really take into consideration. You know, and how do, how do we explain that? I don't know right now, but.
Thirty second snippets on TikTok.
Yeah, no.
I love it.
You know.
There's people dancing behind us.
There was so much confusion over, you know, on that plan with the breakout spaces and 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 nobody understood, you know, what the breakout spaces were and why do you need the breakout spaces?
It's my hangout space.
Yes, but when you're, but but when you're involved. When you know how education is occurring, you look at that as like the most brilliant part of the design was was creating these breakout spaces, right? Like that's critical to. To, you know, cross-based learning and everything was to facilitate that space and facilitate independent learning and independent thinking. So, you know, we all look at it like, that's brilliant, we need to do this, but for. Most of the parents, they go, well, we didn't have that when I was a kid, my kids don't need that either. I can't, that's okay. Two, there's two things that four was forty was chair.
So I'm, I'm just gonna jump in real quick and I, I don't want to necessarily break the flow of this. But I, but I think it it taps into the following questions. What do you believe are the things that we should take away from the process? But I did want to just wrap up. With the question of what went well, we did, what went well as a group? Member and I did want to ask the question uh, on the flip side is what was challenging as a group member? And do you feel you had a voice and was your voice heard and valued?
I didn't see a lot of challenges as being on the committee and like it was easy to talk with everyone. I don't think that was an issue.
It really was just the term.
I think we had to follow that, like with the messaging and. I think everyone's, we're all forgetting that change is difficult. And there's a change curve that everyone has to go through. I'm sure half you have already studied that a million times over, right? Change curve. I think if anyone looks at the election, you can see clearly where we sit on the change curve, right? Um, it's pretty obvious and we're, we're, we're at the beginning of it and we're not where we need to be. And that's turns into a messaging problem, right? We're not educating people on why we think this is needed. Because they're gonna make the decisions and I don't know, I I I don't know the great, the best way to, I mean, maybe it is. Using different methods of social media and doing it thirty second snippets because. That's where people are sitting all day long and that's where you're gonna get their attention. You say, hey, this is why we do the things we do in education now, like. People engage on the deer field. Portions of the, of their social media, right? So maybe we. Small bite sized things over an extended period of time, but then ask for that feedback. So I I don't know how to do this. I'm just. You know, somehow still get that feedback from them too, right? Put out what we think. Is needed and then ask for the feedback at the same time, educate them. On on what we think is needed. You guys know better than we do, right? You know, once, you said you're inside the four walls all day long. What I brought to the table was very different than what, when you said we needed these faces. I'm like, sure, I can tell you. How long it's gonna take to build them, probably what the money's gonna be like, you know, that's. Part I bring. I don't bring the expertise on why we teach the way we teach. But we probably need to. You know, shed some light on that, on on why these schools, the new ones look the way they do. How does that help us? Get that out there. I don't, I don't know how to do that. I mean, messaging is, is, I think, kill those things.
Well, I think that those are good questions, like really, and and it does does jump into that last, what do you believe are the things we should take away from our process? So. You're right, seriously, it's fresh, Mr. Char. I have found out that I I don't facilitate and take notes well. I gave up on taking notes, it's a feeling, kind of sort of. Um, I I did want to just give one last call out um, to. Was there anything challenging in the workings of the group? Did you feel it had a voice and was it heard and valued? And uh, for me, I think I just wanted, I would reiterate what Patty said. It was probably. It was the schedule and the time, and the timeline. We all know. How, what kind of, what kind of process are we in?
Oh, you're one of those, you're, you're east and west, you're just.
And does it fast or slow?
Slow.
There we go, so um.
I say. Lacially.
Lacial, I like it. I I'm, I like.
It's calm, cool and racial.
Yeah, so it was uh, thank you. Thank you. For the euphemisms, um, but it's probably more racial. That was, that was the challenge for me. Like I just felt like constantly like trying to, you know, keep up. Whoa, and and in hindsight, um, I I think that there were times where I may not have used the voice of my intuition. Because of the speed of which we had to work, because there is a small piece of me. Um, and this will relate to the takeaway is I I am still wondering that the speed of what we did hurt us in the long run. I I have that question, just. Makes my hair go on fire sometimes. Is there any other thing that people want to talk about in terms of? In terms of challenge? Okay, in the interest of time and um, so I I, we've done a lot on this question, so I'm just gonna kind of give like a final call out. What do you believe are the things we should take away from this process? You've all mentioned some really good things about. Being thoughtful and thinking about communication, communicating about educating in the twenty, you know. What is stale, what's happening daily in the building, people getting into the building and that that worked against us. You know, there haven't been people in this building for two years and that's just a fact. Um, so. What do people believe are the things that we should take away from this process and and or connect to the next steps?
We, we didn't spend all of much money on the mailers, but we spent a little bit of money on those mailers that went out in a series of three weeks or. Taking that money and stretching it out over the year to do a series of pasta dinners. We do a, we do an August cookout. You know, and the point of the cookout so far has been to get parents and to see their ti- their teachers and with their kids and that obviously makes sense, but. And we open it up to the whole community and make it more about this is what the school is, this is what education's like, this is, this is how we teach in the twenty first century.
Do we have to wait till August to do that? Can we do it in the spring?
Correct, right, exactly.
You knocked the policy off. I think too, if you do, you know, one of the things I I think you gotta do is make sure you show the words. If you plan on convincing people that they need to build it, you need to show them why. You can't be like, this is your teacher this year, and it's all nice and neat. They do a great job setting up their rooms, but. If all we show them is the good stuff and that's all they can see is the good stuff. And if you wanna have them see the bad mechanical systems. Keep that door open, let them see it. You wanna see the fact that we have so much stuff in the shoe closet? That open, show them. Those. God forsaken buildings outside. Sorry, but.
It was the best year last year.
Man, you see. The price tag we paid and.
Yes, I know, and it was based on COVID though, so that's, that's my perspective, but that's been people's perspective for the past two years. Biography night was awesome, just to have people in the building.
Yeah, absolutely.
You know, and and there was parents there that hadn't seen their kids' rooms yet. It was, it was a really a nice, a nice event.
I, I walked in, when school first started this year, I walked in, I think I said to Kristen. The, the, the building was alive again. It was the first time this building was. Alive. I think I said it to you, it felt good to see the building kind of alive and. Awake and being what it's supposed to be and.
Not gonna change your mind still.
No, it doesn't, but.
You gotta be able to show them, have this room over here, what it is, have this room, what it could be. Like you gotta show people. It's not tangible. They're not gonna do it. They're not gonna, not gonna walk away processing.
But at the same time, I don't want it to seem like a sales pitch. I mean, it would kind of, you know, it's unavoidable that part of it is gonna be a sales pitch, but I think it's an important change perhaps in our perspective. We wanna be bringing the community in just because we wanna bring the community in, not because of trying to sell them something. And so starting even not just this year, but looking ahead, making it regular, trying to restart the community conversation.
Yeah, and that, that, that's been a, a burden and a hurdle we've been trying to overcome for. Forever, right? It's how do you? How do you get the community involved? The community says they want to be more involved. They scream about this, you know, they they tell you they want, they want, they wanna be more inclusive and transparent. And you're like. But, but we are. Ridiculously transparent and it's all done in the open. It's all inclusive. Now it's streaming and it's. Like, how else? Can we do it? Because from a functional standpoint. We can only do what we do in meetings, right? And. You know, that's, you know, you you hear, well, you should be putting stuff on Facebook, should be putting stuff on Facebook. We should be doing this, we do this, but still at the end of the day, and again, this is me being pessimistic, I'm sorry. At the end of the day, we never get. A different result. We try different things, but the result of that seems to be consistently. The same. And so what we haven't tried is, yeah, let's, let's get fifty pounds of pasta or a hundred pounds of pasta and have at it. Let's. I'll stand outside and cook burgers all day long and whatever it is. But. I certainly. I want the, the community needs to participate. To some extent in the process and. Without knocking on everybody's doors and like breaking lawn chairs and saying, all right. It's your turn. Let's go sit out in front of the porch and talk about this. It's a difficult thing to overcome. I don't know.
Yeah, that's, I think you're right, you're right. The, the problem is we can't force people in the. We've got, we, we got to figure out a way to convince them to want to kind of whatever it is we're gonna do. It's pasta dinner. If you thought they wanna come to that, that's great. Understanding everywhere. I mean, we, we said at the beginning, you're like, thank you everyone for coming because you're always busy. Reason why the people don't come is because they're busy. They get home from work and you know, I mean. I got a gazillion kids, you know that. I, I get home like a zillion. It's pretty close. It's, uh, I'm not gonna ask any of the teachers, they'll tell you. It's pretty. That's the reason why we need an addition. But there is no doubt in my mind that I single handedly have enough. But it's, it's hard because I get home, my wife's been working all day, you know, we gotta get the kids ready for bed. We gotta feed them. We gotta make sure they have the stuff done for school and then.
Get their book ready.
Get the book ready, get every, and then by the time, like when I sit down, it's like you're thirty and I don't feel like getting back up again. And that's, the entire community is dealing with the same things. We have to figure out a way to get them in and get them involved, knowing that you can't force them. We can't be upset if they don't show up because again, we're, we're already using analogy. You only get the same ten coaches every year, right? That's not gonna change. We can't get upset about that. We just have to figure out a way around it. Whether it's different versions of social media to get it out to them, whether it's a spaghetti dinner to bring, bring people in. But then we do at that point, I know you don't wanna sell it, but at that point, if you have something that you need to get done, that you have to. But you only get their attention for five minutes. Take that five minutes and use it.
You just have to send magic people with the information. You're like sending a broken record. You just have to repeat it and repeat it and repeat it over and over again. I spent a lot of time in this building over the last seventeen years. I've been to PTO meetings, school board meetings. I have volunteered in the school. Every week except the last two years. And I didn't go a lot of the things that were wrong with the building. So I knew that there was space, obviously. I know that there's no room for the teachers to plan anything, to have lunch. There's no like. There's no space, but as far as like things failing, like that I was aware of HVAC problems and plumbing and. So you just have to hammer that information out to people until they tie the hair in. Volunteers helped me do that. I feel like, so Jackie and I were brought in kind of late in the game. Maybe we were brought in too late. Maybe we could have. Hammered the information. I don't, I don't, I don't know.
I think you and Jack, the community jumped on you and Jackie in a completely inappropriate way when you were trying to provide information.
Well, you put ourselves up there.
No, but. That was a just, that was a dark and disheartening side of this community that I do. From a, just living here my entire life. That was a part, that was the part of this town, this town is better than it. What we saw.
For sure.
This town is better than that, right?
And I've seen that. That's why I don't dwell on.
Right, right. But it was disheartening to see. And it was disheartening to see a lot of that. And this is, this is why I hate social media so much. It was disheartening to see. That so much bad misinformation out there. And not a soul that was spreading that bad information actually trying to find the right. That.
And I just.
Right. So like, oh, wait, wait, wait. My, my, my thing from all of this. That, that, you know, that level of bad information of just plain like bull. From a handful of people in the community. That, that was frustrating. And seeing a handful of people in the community dig into people that, you know. Volunteering their time and their energy to try to help, partially because I think they know how much collectively this board is probably the least active social media group of people you will ever find. Right?
You're trying to put it out, turning comments off. What would you do that? Your post sinks to the bottom of the group feed and it gets lost. Yeah. Like your post will show up. I think she pins them actually on the town page. So that it's up there and then she unpins it and it falls because nobody's commenting on it. In order for us to keep the yes for DCS posts at the top of the group feed, we had to allow engagement. Otherwise it just gets lost in somebody posting about why aren't we paving mental road and the job that lost.
So it's hard, but we can't, one of the things we gotta, I think we gotta make sure that we. It's everyone's choice certainly, but we can't focus on the negative aspect and become the lightning rod. Because that is what happened.
I certainly felt like the lighting brought up.
Well, it, it, I think we need to make sure that we disengage at that point because then it just becomes completely negative. Again, the focus has to be on getting the information out there that we believe to be correct. Get the feedback and take it. But we don't have to engage with every person that tries to fight us, right? Just like the balloon in the schoolyard. It's, I'm just gonna turn around and walk away. And, and the engagement, that level doesn't help because you're just encouraging them. And I'm not, I, I, I don't, I'm not trying, I, I'll just leave that on a rest. Don't use.
You know, so there have gotta be better ways than social media to communicate with people. Either like a newsletter that goes out. Once, I don't know, like the PTO started doing a newsletter to let the community know, like the school community, obviously we're not. You know, reaching out outside of, because we're trying to fundraise for the school obviously, but. So we put out a newsletter and say, here's our, you know, here's what's going on, events that we're doing that are free and try just to be fun events and our fundraises that are going on. They pay for these fun things for the kids to do. Maybe the school board should have a newsletter that goes out. I know you guys put like a little bit in the bridge, but maybe like, I don't know, and then this, the whole issue of there's too many emails coming home. Or too many things kind of.
They won't forbid you mail something to somebody else, right?
Just don't make it glossy and.
So I'm just, I'm just gonna jump, jump in a little bit here and just in the interest of time, we've been going now for about an hour. You know, because we had some beginning stuff, so a little over an hour. And I, I wanna honor everybody's time and we don't have to solve it all here tonight, but I really did wanna kind of just begin to generate. I'm like, you know, my hope, I feel really, I hope you all feel really good. That will be my last question. Um, but, um, I, I, I just, I wanted to, um, just say that. Uh, I, I, I think we need help with, with these types of ideas. I, I don't, I don't know that we can collectively do them. And I, and I do, I, I've had some of the same sentiments as you. It was, I, I mean, I swore for a long time. I, I have a lot of practice at not engaging. I was an assistant principal. I, I, I have a pretty thick skin in Teflon, you know. But after I think so much at times, you, you, you just, like I told Zach not to. I was like, great, we gotta not engage. And then the very next meeting, I, you know, I, I lost my own craft. So, uh.
Which you did all.
Which I owned, I did. I did all that. Um, I'll sit some. I, you know, I, I think that, uh, it's important for us to have these ideas. Um, and, and then I, I, I don't know if it'll happen at another work session or if it'll happen at our goal, our goals meeting, but. Um, I really wanted to thank you guys for, for everything. I, I did wanna just address the fact that one of the reasons. That was so tricky. It's so tricky having a subcommittee that is for something. And having them interlace with the board is because we cannot be accused of electioneering. And so that we kind of had to like, here's information, but we can't, you know. The board can't be putting out this information. This has to be, this, if this particular group would like to put out this information, they can do that. So that part becomes tricky and we may need help with that part in the future. How do we create subcommittees that go and do their own work? But we continue to put out factual information. That's why it took so long for those mailers to get out. Everybody was like. Okay, well, you sent these mailers and they're late and that, you know, they have a wrong date on them and that meeting's already passed. And they were sitting in a lawyer's office making sure that, that, that we were not electioneering.
They have to do.
Exactly. So, uh, you know, it was a tricky business. So the last question that I'll ask in closing is how did this process go for everybody? Did people find this process useful?
You mean today?
Today? No, right?
No, today's good. I think it's good to take, you know, the one, the biggest takeaway, uh, you know, I've, I've made a few suggestions than everyone else, but. You know, if we, if we wanna be successful, I think we need to consider when you start a project like this, if you know it's gonna be a lightning bolt, then. Put money aside for marketing because you're gonna need it.
Anybody else wanna talk about like just tonight's process? Like how, how did it go? Was it? Um, you know, what, were the questions helpful? Is it helpful to have a facilitated discussion? Is it, is it too disruptive to have a facilitated discussion?
Get the soundtrack. It's good to hear it. Not being part of the community, I agree with hearing all the perspectives of how much your.
Any suggestions or if we have a teacher facilitated discussion? Oh, thank you. Can I say something else? An- another point, you know, we have, we have this great barbecue. Um, why don't, why don't we ask people from, I feel like we're losing touch with people in the building. What if we asked Danny Gregg to come for that night and she can give out some information about the free day? What if we had someone from the library come over? What if we had someone from the Deerfield Inn that people comes with their luggage and they get such in? Like it's an Alzheimer's facility. Here's, here's something that, you know, like have it more community based. So it's not like, especially if we're gonna be outside, like Danny Gregg has such great services for people. A lot of people don't know that and it's a non-threatening in- information. It's not like you're going to the town to get information on that. But if we had more community access to some of the people that are coming to the school to, to that, to those people.
Almost like a town wide open.
Yes.
It's everything.
Yeah, yeah.
It's facilitated.
Exactly. And, and these, and these are some of the things that the town has to offer and, and you, you go away with something in your hand from the town. Maybe something, maybe something from the library. These are the library hours and, you know, welcome, come, come on over and, and see.
You have to offer. Hundred percent important to help you guys do that kind of stuff.
Yeah, I mean, I think we're, we're losing, and the thing is, you know what, Zach? There's people that come, that, that feel they don't wanna come to the school. Nothing to do with our school. It may be their experience as a child. They feel uncomfortable around this, around it. So we need to get, get through to those people to come over here and say, oh my gosh, like here's, here's something that, uh, that parks are wrecked. You might be interested in. There's, there's some other things that, that we can offer them and, and, and actually have something tangible. Put it on their refrigerator. Maybe, maybe something, you know, this is a library. This is, um, the Deerfield Inn. The Deerfield Inn has, has Alzheimer's things for caregivers. Did you know that? Oh, maybe, maybe, you know, maybe people don't know that. I'm saying we, we have lost touch with this community. We don't have community service for the kids and that's something that I can, this is not the proper time, place to ask you about, but I've already talked to the Deerfield Inn. About establishing something like that for kids. I, I think that we're, we're losing touch and, and young kids for the parks are wrecked. I mean, couldn't there be some kind of, kind of lays on with that? I, I, I think there's a, a great opportunity out here. We have a captive audience. How about we introduce people from the town and the people from the town get to know the people that might need some needs too and reach out? Anyway, I, I thank you for doing this. Well, I really thanks so much because I know it was like, yeah, another meeting. Um, and, and Jeff, if you're out there listening. No, no, no. Oh, Jeff Maggie, yeah. Uh, please feel free to chime in on any of, uh, of the, uh. Well, I, I get back to us on any of the questions that, um, you know, that we, we discussed. So I, I just wanted to thank Andy for, for your work on behalf of the board.
Are you ready to move on to the next item? Are you handing rings back?
Yep.
Okay.
Absolutely.
All right. So, uh, the agenda currently we're gonna do, we have a survey results. That'll be a alternatives, communication, communicator, town planning. A lot of it really is in kind of tying to a little bit of the conversation we just had. Um, but if you wanna do, uh, get a survey results, Andy is gonna lead the charge on that one. If he's awake and alive over there, volumes on or whatever, uh, whatever it is.
Yeah, I'm awake and alive. Um, I did send out a summary, uh, to the group. Uh, not sure if everyone's had a chance to look at it. Um, but I did try to create a, like an executive summary. Um, and then I also tried to create a, uh, community commitment effective, effectively slide. That tried to summarize our findings from the survey. You know, I guess in the form of the executive summary and then for the community commitment, what, uh. You know, my impression and takeaway was from the survey results that I wanted to share with you all. Um, and so I guess I'll start with the executive summary. Um, it touched on, uh, and I'm not gonna read it, um, but it basically acknowledged that we had a townwide vote. And that the board wanted to collect, uh, additional information and details, uh, from residents, uh, about, you know, maybe why they voted, how they did. Um, it also mentioned that, uh, as part of that, uh, we held, uh, an open discussion similar to what's, what was going on, uh, just prior to me. Talking about the survey, this kind of round table that's going on in the room right now. Uh, we had about ten to fifteen participants. And then we followed that by, uh, utilizing, uh, surveys, uh, both physical and digital. Um, I listed the places in town, uh, that they had been posted. Um, and the results that we had received, approximately a hundred and seventy eight. Um, and then I don't know if we got any physical survey responses, uh, although we did, um, place those around town as well. Uh, again, uh, taking the liberty to make an assessment of the results that I reviewed. Um, things that we've already talked about, uh, tonight, um, I noted that the community wanted us to revise, um, the cost. Taxes, project scale, uh, process. And then, you know, I think sharing details and communication, uh, was a consistent theme as well. Um, but I think the one thing, um, or two things that I could take away from all the responses were to replace modulars. And continue our work repairing the existing building. Um, I think that comes as no surprise to the group. Um, I guess I don't know if there are any initial questions that folks have for me or. If, uh, we'd like to actually go through the different survey questions and the respondents. I don't know how you all would like to proceed.
I think we need to go through, there are so many, I think we can kind of. Go through some of the more, um, some ones. You know, I, I think the first one.
Can you hear Jeff?
Yes.
I think the first one to highlight was the, just because we've talked about so much, was the communication question. Um, and this kind of summed up, I guess, our challenge in a nutshell. You know, if you go, that's slide page twenty seven, I believe. And asking, you know, a hundred and seventy people how they gathered their information, it was probably the most evenly split question. You know, between social media thirty percent, public meetings at twenty five percent, printed mailing from the school board at thirteen percent. SAUD, SAU website at thirteen percent. I mean. That to me highlighted the fact that our communication needs to hit every single vector and not just social media, not just X, Y, or Z. I know, I, I found this one very eye opening and we need, you know. The good news was very few people responded that couldn't find the information. We do need to be careful that we're, you know, only ten percent of, not even ten percent of voters. I think eight people have filled out the survey didn't even vote, so. The question is how much can we rely on this data? That, that's a good point.
Uh, I mean, Zach, Zach did mention, um, you know, that we had a certain percentage of voter turnout, you know, for the election. Um, and then there was a, you know, smaller percentage that, you know, responded to the survey. So I don't wanna say the data is skewed, but it's definitely a small sample size. But I mean, based on what we've talked about and based on like what you're saying. It, it seems like the most logical path forward is to continue, you know, distributing information through all the channels that we've tried, continue to do that.
Yeah. The other thing we should be cognizant of when we're looking at this is. You know, seventy pers- sorry, seventy of the respondents, um, voted in favor of the project and a hundred voted in favor. you know, seventy pers- sorry, seventy of the respondents, um, voted in favor of the project and a hundred voted against it. So that right there is just not, you know, not our twenty percent, so we had.
Right, so it theoretically skews the results all the way.
Yeah, it's giving us a lot more positive feedback than.
Right.
You know, the community out there, but I think.
Which I think is consistent with previous arguments may, may that just by going predominantly digitally here, going through the schools' channels, we're reaching mostly the schools' families. And that's why we're getting a much larger proportion of people who supported the project.
I guess the question I have for the board is, you know, was there anything new or eye-opening in the survey results that are gonna change our? We needed the information to make better decisions. We wanted the information. We needed it to make better decisions. Um, aside from the communication one, I was, there wasn't one particular response that kind, you know, one question that was like that silver bullet I was kind of hoping for, like, oh, that's what we need to do. Everyone feels kind of the same way, or?
Uh, okay.
Oh, go ahead, Nate.
Sorry, I was gonna say page ten, I thought was pretty telling. Um, in that, uh, that first glance, that was pretty convincing that really we just overshot our, our, our ask by ten million dollars. But the fact that only twelve people responded to that, I think tells a different story.
You're looking at it first and you're like, okay.
I was just scratching my head at that one. I don't know why so few people responded to it. I wonder whether, I think we had twenty to twenty-five or ten to fifteen.
What was the question? How was it framed?
So it's, if you voted against Article One, would you have supported an expansion or renovation project if it were priced at three to thirty-five, thirty-five to forty, forty to forty-five?
I can talk about that too, based on some of the actual, uh, responses to other questions. Um, seeking feedback on other questions, um, folks actually commented that, um, the, the, um, the options for the pricing, the groups that were listed here with the, the floor being thirty, uh, that wasn't a good opportunity for the community to, um, voice their opinion in the survey because if you wanted to spend forty-six million, you couldn't choose that. Um, so that was an oversight, I think, on my part.
That's, I think Nate's right. If you, if we can back into it and say, that tells us that thirty million was too expensive and our floor is probably, that's my interpretation.
The ten to fifteen million dollars, no one was an option or whatever, fifteen to twenty, who knows what the magic number is, but I, I have a feeling it was below thirty.
Yeah, say that's a good observation.
Thanks, Jeff.
You're welcome.
Uh, one, I guess I'd like to call attention to, we've, we've already talked about it, so it's just gonna echo, uh, the same sentiment is twenty-nine. It's basically saying, what's the best way for the board to provide information to, um, you know, residents about the building and expansion project? A hundred and seventy-two responses. Um, and as Jeff, you noted on, uh, twenty-seven, it's pretty evenly split between website newsletter. Uh, there was, um, quite a, a popular response for print materials. Um, and then in-person discussions, and then if I could follow up the in-person discussions, um, on, um, slide, I wanna say thirty-two. Um, one, the first item that I had listed was, uh, folks asking for informal coffee chats. Uh, and that's just one example of, uh, informal conversations, uh, that people were, were interested in having. Also, different locations, uh, was popular, other than the school, other different times of day. Um, you know, for, for reasons about childcare and that sort of stuff, which we, we, which we've talked about as well. Those, those were pretty popular, uh, feedback items.
One of the other ones that kind of, I'm still, as I'm digesting, it's kind of throwing off this question eleven, which was prioritizing expansion or renovation. I don't know that that result is what I anticipated it being. Where, you know, it was pretty evenly split, both of them both being equally important, but a huge, I mean, forty-eight and a half percent of the people who responded felt renovation was more important than expansion. Uh, and I think that showed maybe on our behalf of a need to help educate more and the reason why it's difficult to separate or it's difficult, it's difficult, you can't renovate necessarily until after the expansion's complete. But I think it shows maybe the part where we should have, could have communicated better within the community on how the process has to work. Kind of throughout. And what is renovation, what is the? What we dive into is what does the community think renovation is? Is it fixing the roof or does the renovation is opening walls? You know what I mean? Like, like I think there's a deep dive that can be done just based on.
Yeah, but I, I think that, uh, another piece to this could be, uh, or part of my interpretation is, is that there is an argument out there that we have five hundred or five hundred twenty-five kids in the building, we have seventy thousand square foot in the building, do the math. We are within the zone of what the state recommends for spacing. So from that argument, just the numbers, we don't need more space. And so therefore I think that is part of what's coming out here is that expansion means more space, but we have enough space per the numbers with what we have. So that's part of, also part of their part. How we use the space, what education looks like, how it's different, that's part of the education, which I think they need to work on.
Nate, are you saying the entire square footage of the building or the, the square footage of the?
Current square footage of our building is seventy thousand square feet and per the state requirements, one hundred and forty square feet per pupil. That comes in right around five hundred or five hundred twenty kids, which is right where we are.
Teaching space, right?
Yeah, but I don't think that's part of the calculation, is it? Like, that's not how they, the state, the state doesn't look at it that way.
Yeah, well, I mean, I think maybe that's another, that's another whole battle. The state only hasn't brought the standards up.
So that, that changed in.
Twenty-first century education.
That changed in two thousand and ten.
That was a rea- I think, correct me if I'm wrong, I think you may know better, but.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. It's many years ago.
Yeah, it was.
Yeah, so that, that to me is problematic. Um, one thing I wa- I wanted to say, uh, first of all, is like, I just wanted to, uh, thank all the people who participated in the survey, uh, for their feedback. Um, you know, we got a lot of, we got some feedback on the survey when the survey went out, so we, I think probably learned some things about. Um, feedback, I know Andy and I were kind of the quasi-subcommittee for, for surveys and, um, you know, Andy really did the yeoman's, uh, work and, and putting it together, uh, but we're not, uh, professional survey writers. Uh, we were just trying to fill off of many of the questions that we, that were raised kind of as we kind of comb through the informal feedback that we were receiving. Um, I, I also think that, uh, this is, it's a, it's a lot, because there are so many questions, it's a lot of data to look at. And I was wondering if part of a, like, for me, I, I have, again, glacial processor. So got the info, you know, just looking at the pie charts, pretty new, I, I looked at them when Andy sent them, but there's a lot to, to take in, so I didn't know if it's worthy of, um, when we go to do kind of like either a next steps work session or something in one of the upcoming work sessions, or whether it's the goal setting, that we pull the data back out and we, you know, and we again, kind of look at it in a formalized manner and maybe, um, look at answering specific questions like, you know, what's significant about this data? Um, what questions does the data raise for us? Um, and then what implications does it have for our work? You know, that.
I was just gonna say that my concern, uh, data dive is what I always wanna do when I have the data. But if we only have, you know, you're supposed to have at least minimum thirty percent, right, results on surveys before you consider it valid data. I'm not saying this is invalid at all. You're talking about ten percent of the voters.
Yes.
Percent of the people that voted.
Exactly. Right, that makes me nervous. And I should probably clarify that a little bit, um, is that more so not using it as like, oh, this is the definite direction we should go. But as we look at it, it may be the springboard that we use for, these are ideas for some of our next steps. I mean, there are ideas at, and at the end, you know, people, um, at the end of the survey, there was kind of open-ended stuff and there's a lot of things that are listed in those bullet points. Um.
Do you have, you have access to the raw document, everything?
So one of the things that, um, I was actually gonna try to talk about was the results that I shared with the group. It does not include, uh, individual respondents', uh, information, anything along those lines. Um, and Gigi, to kind of touch on what you said, I would like to bring this up at another meeting. Um, you know, to potentially, you know, have this be, um, published, like with, along with our notes, right? Um, and because there's no, you know, personal identifiable information on it. Um, you know, I think that would be helpful and that might drive, uh, people to wanna, you know, provide more commentary on some of the specifics. Um, you know, that were called out in this document.
So anyway, I, yeah, thanks, Andy. I, I don't know if we should put it on, if, if we put it to rest or if we should just kind of like have it as a, a referral, something to refer to.
I, I, I think there is, um, I think the responses create follow-up questions to dive deeper into certain responses, right? I think, um, maybe the next step is that, uh, at the next meeting is to try to figure out what some of those follow-up questions may be. And it may be for a future survey, but you try to get them unpacked and listed. But I think to Andy's extent, you know, people wanna be involved in the process, so this is part of the process. We should, let's put the results, let's attach the results to the minutes of a meeting or publish them independently. And this is the raw data, this is what we have back so far.
Yeah.
And as we, if you wanna be included, this is part of that kind of that process, so I think we should do that, whether we need to attach it to meeting minutes or we just.
Let's, I can post them.
Post them. Yeah, so.
The only, uh, I guess clarification or point to call out is on the executive summary slide and the community commitment slide, the first and then last slide. Um, the, my take, uh, that's what they are, they're my takeaways. So I guess I would, I would ask that the board, Patty, Kristen, um, you all take a look at my language and just kind of approve it.
Yeah, and we just need to make it clear that, that, that's, it's, it's the kind of subcommittee's takeaway, first takeaway from the data.
Is there, is there a reason not to just get the raw down, like a raw spreadsheet, just post the raw spreadsheet, here's the data, you could look at it if you want.
Yeah, I, I think the best thing, the first step before you even attach a summary or a document or anything else is here's the raw data. So here's, here's the results, we did the first and the last page of, here are the results. This is what came back from a hundred and seventy-six responses.
I mean, all the spreadsheet with everything on it, because we didn't get all the comments in here from all the.
Do we have all the commentary in there, Andy?
Not in the, uh, summary report that was sent out. There were, in some instances, there were hundreds of comments. And so I read through them, uh, and tried to summarize what the themes were, uh, as the text that I put on the slides that you have. But, um, yeah, I mean, I can remove the email addresses of, you know, names and that sort of thing, um, and get an Excel sheet out.
Has all of that on it? I think it's okay to produce what we're looking at right now, the board is sage.
Yeah.
But I think as a follow-up, we can include all the comments in separate.
I get it, but yeah. If, I think I was coming to, I would like to see all the comments.
Well, they're all about.
Yes, I, I was gonna say that.
But suppose that I agree, Andy, we definitely would take away the email, but we will impose that, of course. So if we publish it, then we all, you know, take all that.
Andy, this is Kristen, you, the, you used a Google form, right?
That's correct.
Cause it automatically populates into a Google, um, spreadsheet, the answers. Did you know that?
Correct, yes.
Okay, okay, I'm just making sure you have that information.
So let's start by publishing the survey results. So we have, let's put the executive summary and the commitment statement out, just because that's as raw and dealt with as possible. And then Andy, if you wanna just try to compile the rest of the commentary, we can add it as a follow-up.
Yeah, cause I agree with Nate. Like, I didn't realize, Andy, that, um, and maybe I just didn't read thoroughly enough that all of the, uh, comments that people wrote were not theirs. I knew the pie charts were part of the raw data. So. Because Google Docs does that for us, but I would like to also see the, uh, raw comments.
Andy, you said the first and last page to take off?
I'm sorry, say that again?
It was the first and last page, right, to remove?
Um, regarding the material that I had sent out, uh, to the group, the first and last page were my takeaways. Um, the pages that I'm thinking, maybe you're talking about removing are the actual survey results, uh, that would be in an Excel format and it would be the names and contact information of people that responded.
Right, yep.
Yep.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, Nate, just to follow up on yours and then, uh, Gigi, your, um, note as well about the responses. So on each of the slides, you should see, obviously the graphics have, uh, the list of the responses underneath the questions. On any slides, uh, where there was just a text, uh, of the question, I did include the number of responses as its own line item. Um, but all that, all that, uh, data will be available on the Excel sheet.
Yeah, so when we see a hundred responses, we're seeing seven or eight there in the thematic and the chunky. So let's, let's update that to see it all, the responses.
I don't see the spreadsheet, I only have the pie charts.
So then you didn't get the original document shared with you, like?
Do you have the actual Google form?
Yep.
You can go to the, there's your results there.
So I think what we should do is, is let's take a couple of weeks to kind of all look at this in a little bit more detail.
Yes.
And we can revisit it at our next meeting or we can save it for the next work session, once the, once the board and everything.
Thanks.
Work session, okay. So Andy, the next work session, we're gonna try to do a little bit deeper dive. So, can you hear me?
Yeah, I got you. The spreadsheet's, I mean, it's already ready to go, so.
Yeah, so blast those out, uh, so that we can review all of that as well and then we'll, we'll do a deeper dive in, uh, the next work session.
You got it.
Awesome, all right. Anything else regarding the survey? Next up, uh, alternative designs. Everybody has potentially an alternative design, this is something that. So, wait for Kristen to read James. To make sure you guys are really able to put it up there. Open the jump in, so.
Wendy, can we get those?
Yeah.
So I think.
Help me teach you write this. It's okay.
So, so this is, uh, I think what Jay has, um, some ideas and takeaways from his last, our last work sessions. Right, any ideas and kind of maybe some thematic thoughts that came to mind, so I don't know what you can have there, but we're gonna put something up on the screen and I think we all have a.
Exactly, uh, so thank you for inviting me, I don't know if it was the last meeting or the meeting before, when we had the public roundtable. But it was really good to hear the public's input and, uh, some takeaways from that. What I tried to do from that meeting, just got things thinking based on what, what I heard from that. I think we're hearing from the public is to kind of come up with a much smaller design. It has definitely some fee drawbacks, which I'll put up on the screen too that were attached. Uh, but this is a much smaller, smaller scale.
Oh, what is that?
Yep.
It's cool. So instead of, this is the plan we had before. Plan we had before up here, had a wing off this side and had a space in the future for a gymnasium that could be on that side. Um, in this design, we're designing here, it just takes that space that we had for the gym and puts some classrooms there, which allows us to keep the portals and not have to move them during the construction, we simplify the construction a little bit. It does simplify what's happening in the building a lot. So there's a lot less renovation, basically those, those plug spaces, those breakout spaces that we were talking about before. I took those out. And again, this is probably, this may be scaled back way too much, but I thought I wanted to just get us talking. Maybe I went too far, maybe I can go further, but it's just step one. So, uh, the renovation that we had before, we had a bunch of heavy renovation spots, oops. Just pull this way.
No.
You have the, the arrows.
Side there.
Touch the other side.
On the little little things to your side. That back button, that back arrow?
Yeah. Now what?
Thank you.
Just hit the hit the um VGA button twice. Yeah. There you go.
Oh, so there we are. So the the pockets we had of heavy renovation, I've removed those at this time, just to do some simpler. Uh we had before. So um starting at the top, so family consumer science, um that's removed from this design. From what we heard from the public, it sounded like that was something that was too far in the future. But we do have a help role that we think could be grow that program. So in the future, you could add that as that program does expand. The shop has been removed, but instead we do have a maker space that again, hopefully that maker space can generate, get people excited about that. Future program that could be a shop in the future. Uh the bubble classrooms. So before we had one per two, two grades totaling five bubble classrooms. This, we have one per three grades equaling three extra classrooms. So kind of scaling that back, we are, I think we are from the public that there was just too many extra classrooms. So I think right now you use two bubble classrooms, right, which you have your two grades that are bubbling through and it looks like there might be another one coming up pretty soon. So that that should handle your needs immediately. Uh we removed the breakout areas throughout the school, so there's less heavy renovation throughout the school. Uh the large community room has been removed and uh we've uh now made the library, the existing library, the community space. Uh there's no cafeteria expansion. Um no second gym or fitness room. Obviously, that was a second piece anyways, whole scheme of things. The small group and one-on-one spaces, there are still some in the building, but they're limited. They're not as many as we were hoping to get in the project. Uh the maturity of the school will be simplified with later renovations. So as we talked about, truly getting the school started, we tried to use as many pieces as we could to try to limit that dollar cost for renovation. And then um as I said before, the portables on the left side wouldn't have to be moved. We could keep those there during construction, which would simplify construction a little bit. And as you will notice in the plan, I'm gonna use the arrows instead of the screens. Um we do that pocket of wetlands that happens off the side of the school. So the most simple, the simplest version of this would be to come straight off. So we go right at that wetlands and that's gonna obviously cost us money the more we touch that. So this is ginked a little bit, which it angled us add a little bit to the project, but it avoids the cost of trying to there. So we're trying to. Uh so the design itself, we're we're taking the classrooms that we know need to move downstairs, which are arts and music, because we have our smaller kids in those and a tech lab and some preschool and kindergarten space and put that on the lower level down there. And then renovating the rest of the classrooms in place there right now. The nurse admin and and uh admin suite really does need to grow based on COVID requirements, based on what your program is for the school. So that space would still grow similarly to what we talked about before. And special needs, special services um would also grow in the front of the school too. So it would take over that whole front part of the school. At the next level up, we get uh seventh and eighth grade pod here. The space in the middle for team gatherings, um restrooms, learning pods um in that area. And then as we move between the new area and existing area of the school, we create a project lab space. That's gonna be that maker space that we're talking about, that hands-on space. It becomes the connector between both buildings. And then sixth grade spills around that. So you kind of have seventh and eighth and sixth grade kind of spilling around that space. And then the rest of the grades happen around that. The community presentation room or the presentation room the kids would use, the community would be the library, we'd renovate that space to be that. And then we have um music and other specials in this area. We have a music and art on this level and music art on a lower level. So we have an upper grade. What I did is skip over on the lower level quick. That connector that I talked about on the upper floor, that would be the 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 maker space or the project space on this level. The main level would be the new media center library again. So that all kids would be on the lower level, they could use that space. And we're also given an opportunity to use outdoor space that that gets spilled outside. I think that's kind of the highlights of the plan. Again, it's smaller than we've been talking. The square footage is, this is about forty percent less square footage than the addition. But it's definitely smaller. And then the renovations, as we just said, we're not doing as many heavy renovations that ever is gonna come down. And the light renovations that I think we really need to look at, what we can keep in place, what you've already done, rather than just let's go through and just just um try to make it, bring everything up to like new standards. Let's kind of do more of a thought process. Um Zach brought up the the transition time where while things are being worked on, where do the kids go? And that is working into this, you can have places for other kids while you're doing the renovation. I I because we still have the portables here.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, you have you you haven't um given anything for the portable, so that that's a viable option for what you're talking about.
Yeah, keep the kids there while. Yeah, so we can build this and we can move the kids in, then we can renovate that.
Yeah, because that's really what your heavy renovations is. It's gonna be across in front of the building for the most part, right?
Yeah.
One thing that that jumped at me, took me, when I first looked at this, it took me a few minutes to realize is that we relocated a stairwell.
Yes, I'm sorry.
That freed up space on both floors.
Yes, you obviously you have a code violation right now where you drop kids that leave this floor, they go into a stairwell and they drop back out into the building. They should be able to directly from the stair to outside. So we're solving that issue on one corner with moving that stairs.
So as I look at this, should, and I actually saw that as a gain of space, right? Actually quite a bit of space, you know, three hundred and fifty square feet, so small spins, but times two, times two. But should we, should the stairwells be externally turned in on the building? And does that create your uh your uh, oh my god, brain fart. Your uh your your comment space, your your shared space. It could that create that shared space you're looking for around with just possibly turning out the stairwells. I only have one a year, so.
As long as we don't have to say that was a really good idea to Zach over and over again.
I I only have one a year, that's it. But as, I mean, as we look at like a plan like this, is there potentials to to reincorporate some of those things that we're losing? And that was one of the the thoughts that came to mind was, do we purge that out, create those breakout areas? Yeah, they're not ideally located perfectly where you want them, but if they're in each corner of the building, you might be able to utilize them in a fashionable kind of get you what you want. Maybe they're a more open breakout area, but but certainly your potential there. One of my, one of my feedback thoughts.
So applying just dollar per square foot cost, it looks like, you know, this is gonna run us out. All things being equal, those sixteen million. Based off what the thirty million direct of its worth. My guess is that probably be a little lower too, just because we don't have that large community area with the glass wall and all of that. So, good question on the cost. Again, I'm not an estimator, but I throw some numbers out just because I Because you knew it was gonna come up, saying it was gonna, I called Keith before this meeting, just to say, hey, Keith, what are we seeing? What's going on in the market? And he said, for right now, they're carrying a twenty percent change from last year's numbers. So the good thing is, we already, we put ten, ten percent already in our numbers. So we already had a ten percent buffer. We have to add. He's gonna confirm this, but in theory, we have to add another ten percent to whatever number we have left. So we take that number, we add the ten percent, and then as you're doing the math, you basically divide it half.
So so you're you're looking at somewhere maybe twenty-five million including contingencies.
Great work.
What a delivery of less renovations that number is gonna come down even.
I don't think so too.
So listen, what what we all need to recognize is Nate is the smartest. Depends on the meeting, okay? I used my good idea, so I'm all done.
I think one thing that we need to consider as a board is that like Keith said, and and we're all very aware is that the construction market right now is insane. And timing has been brought up as well as cost. And I I love this plan for what it does as far as responding to the town's needs. And I don't want to try and have a crystal ball and it's horrifying trying to run a construction business during this time because it feels like we're at some point in the bubble and everyone's kind of
It never goes back down.
Yeah, it doesn't. But um I mean, I think the reality is, you know, we sit on another year, we sit on two years, at what point do costs come back down to earth? Lead times come back to normal and all that. And that that's one thing I do think we need to consider because it was a concern that was voiced prior to the bond vote. You know, there was a couple of people that got up and spoke about it. And it's gonna be something that comes up, so. If all, if we were in a normal world without construction costs, just going through the roof, I feel like let's run with it and push for March. But that is one thing that gives me pause and I think we need to think about as a board is, you know, is the timing, right? Trying to time markets never works, but it's weird right now.
No, but I think I think there's a lot of things to unpack, right? So this is, this is an idea. It's a different idea. We're undoing everything, all that previous work. There's a lot of work that carries over. Like, we knew what the deficiencies in the building. All that pre-engineering work is done. There's a lot of stuff there. It's a different plan. So I think the first question we need to ask is do we, do we present what we think will pass? Know that it isn't gonna correct everything that we know we want to correct? But it corrects, we get seventy percent of it corrected? Or do we work to do the hundred percent, fix it all at once? Clearly, the community, at least at the first pass, had no desire to fix a hundred percent of it all at once. That doesn't mean the deficiencies went away. It doesn't mean the need went away. So do we try to get a kick the can seventy, eighty percent solution and and let it be another generation's problem twenty years from now?
I have a couple specific questions and then I I have a a general question. One of the specifics or the generals?
This is a wonderful work session. We can go anywhere you want to go.
Okay, so I'll go with the specifics, then I'll go back to the general and I hope I remember it. Um this specific question that I had is, I I thought I heard you say something about um so I see the presentation's multipurpose space. So that's where the current library is.
Yes.
Well, the current, well, and then I thought I heard you say something about moving the library because it needs to be on the first floor. I just don't, I just don't know where it is.
It's the media center.
Yeah. Great, great team classrooms.
Yeah.
Oh, got it. And is that, is that space that's broken out part of it? That blue space that's that's in the armpit there?
The angle though?
Yes.
But so that's part of the media center. Okay, so square, okay, so okay, so this is got, okay.
Plus some exterior space.
And it's got an outdoor reading area.
And outdoor reading, a not.
Yeah, that's pretty cool. Um so that was one question. And then the other question, uh is probably just because I I, you know, even with my glasses, maybe I can't read small print. Is there a teacher workspace?
Yes, so in the as you enter these new pauses, it's like kind of a circle room. Those are, those are work rooms that are right there.
So we, are we, we're on the floor?
It's greenish.
Oh, work room. Oh, yeah, yeah.
Right there, huge. There's, there's small.
Okay, yeah, that's, so it's, I I think of the more as collaboration space, um as opposed to just go to a copy or make a copy, uh but.
They they could be bigger, yeah.
Just, no, and not and not a criticism, we just needed to find them and then think about what that may need to look like. Um and I think those are my specific questions for now. And then I guess my my general question is uh and this is probably more to Zach, but maybe all of us.
Whoa, whoa, whoa.
What do I do?
That's just a question. I I the question is that what do what do we want, what um what do you see or what do we see as the outcome of this discussion? Because I got start to get nervous, like when we're like already, we're starting to talk about solutions. Do we put this on the bond or the string or do we, like I, like, are we gonna come out with that decision tonight?
No, no.
Okay.
No.
All right.
I I think, I think we're just conversing about I think this is a response to what we heard what Jay heard, what I heard. That's the last one.
And I apologize because I I kind of jumped the gun here. I know there's a process to take through and I was just trying to start a conversation with something. And and it's, I, the way I talk, we're under writing words, it's drawing.
Pictures. Way appreciative. I like it. Uh um and I just wanted to be clear. Like, I wanted to be crystal, crystal clear um for folks that are watching and then folks that might read your minutes that 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 this was in response to what we heard and it it simply is another, it is another idea.
And then, and and to that extent, I think, so we talked about, hopefully, you know, should we involve the community? Should the community be able to see the sausage being made? This is how sausage gets made, right? So should we be able to, should we take any and all sets of plans and ideas that we get and submit them out there for feedback and say, hey, here's nothing committed other than these are ideas? And do you want to provide feedback? You don't have to, you can, but is that part of looking, you know, they want to, they they asked us to think outside the box. It actually still look at other alternatives. So here are ideas
Yeah.
with pen to paper, and what is your feedback?
Right. And I think that we could go to start again.
That's fine.
I I I was just gonna say, I uh so I still have two questions. What what are we looking for for the outcome of this discussion? And and you know, this discussion on this agenda item, that's one question I have. And then the second question that I have is
Judy's so far away today.
Yeah, she is. I I it will come back to me, but it it has to do with that's.
Can I answer? I see as answer to your question, so um as far as the outcome from this agenda item, I think that we need to engage with the community much differently than we did last time. And what I would love to see is whether it's this plan or this plan with tweaks, is that we at our next community dinner that hopefully we do very soon, we have a plan like this or options that we can on the home boards at size and have as discussion pieces at those the community dinner, right? Get people and get them talking and seeing it, right? And um
And I mean, do we bring back some of the original plans that got scrapped? Do you say these, these were all the options from the get-go and this is what we think the community may want? Like to what depth do you want to go with that? Or does that, you know, does it get confusing?
I think we we need to be cognizant of the price tag. So I think
I was just thinking that.
You know, there there was one design that was number. Honestly, can't remember. But, you know, I think that we we need to start iterating and doing those iterations in front of the community. Um he is trying to do it as the expansion committee was too much of a vacuum. We are trying to do it as the expansion committee was too much of a vacuum as I think we found out, so. Personally, this plan for me is that perfect. Kind of, this is what the town asked for. Here's a picture, but what do you think? Here's an approximate price tag, right? And have a discussion point because that's, I think the only way we're going to get this to a successful vote whenever that happens.
We. You're the picture guy and the word girl. These pictures are just fluff pieces of paper.
It says a lot more than words.
I can't make this. That's my brain. That's why Barbara noticed that look. So could we get some comparisons? So this, these are the things that we had in the original. And then when we moved to this, these are the things that we've either lost or changed, just to help outline. Because I think most people. And I know the building, but most people are going to come in and just be, you know, the plans are great, but if you could get some kind of a comparison, like I don't know. You know, is, does this still replace all the windows that we were talking about, that kind of stuff? That was that in there?
But I, no, no, it's not in there. But when I say. Simple or get simple like later renovation. So what does that mean?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
I think if we're going to solicit feedback from the community, is it. Obviously, you already have three D rendering of the existing structure.
Yeah, yeah, we do.
But can you, can we profile that at the same time? So at least there's a little bit of a visual because for some people seeing. That helps them connect the dots. I, I think, I think for us, what I, one of the things I think I gathered the most just through the process before was that. Community didn't feel like they had any opportunities to weigh in throughout the process, right? And so. To me, I want to take this information and generate. Here are the things we need you to weigh in on. I think we as a board need to decide, do we continue? Do we, do we continue moving forward with a project and what's the timeline we want to work with the project on? Right? And, and because again, you always have to have a goal. So if we say, you know, we want to bring something else back next year. And I'm not saying the board is committed to that. I'm just saying, but if the board's, if we decide as a board, we want to bring something back next year. We need to make that decision probably sooner than later. So that now we can use time as our friend. See, I'm getting, Gigi's getting anxious, but. But then it allows us to use time as our friend and then we can, we can, we can start by saying to the community, our intentions are to bring something back again. We want the community. To help us mold what you're going to see. And so we're going to do it all in these work sessions, we're going to do it all these meetings, and we're going to try to find every possible way. To get engagement on every single part of the process along the line. And we're going to hear ideas and there's going to be ideas that may be incorporated. There's going to be ideas that. May not be incorporated, but we want you to know that you, we want you to become part of the process. So we're not going to do it in some community. We're going to do it. Like this. But I think we need to figure out what's, what, what, what's the angle.
Yes, and the timing and waiting for costs to come down, I think goes of all parts of this. So I, I would, I would propose that part of, over the next maybe work session. Or two, we start to look at what are the pressing. Issues that are, that are keeping us a deadline. Where's our deadline coming from? I think we heard a, a feeling from the, from the community that. The math says we have enough room for our kids. So the space to them is, that's not a compelling argument. Why forty five million dollars is necessary? You know, a failing roof might be a good argument. A, a, a non-existent parking lot or a really muddy parking lot might be a good argument, but we've already started to talk about those kinds of, those solutions as separate solutions. So if we can deal with the parking lot separately, if we can deal with the roof separately, if we can deal with the subject system separately. And what becomes the driving issue for this project, other than improving, you know, sort of standard things? The, the modulators to me becomes a driving issue, right? While we've made it twenty years, can we make it two or three more years to wait for the cost to come down? Right? So then what really is the, what is the reason what has to be on the March ballot? And I think that if we can make that as a clear argument, that's a good starting place to convince the community that this is why we're doing it now. And in a sort of corollary question. I don't think you were here last meeting. We were talking about paving this parking lot. Do you see this work being compatible with a paved parking lot or do you see? Would a paved parking lot get ripped up by doing this? And so we should hold off on paving the parking lot until this is done. I think.
The back, you're talking about the dirt lot.
No, I don't think. I don't think we set a. Date or an expectation that we're. And with you, I do not have a sense of time, I like deadlines and working towards it. I think that we put it out there that we are going to be bringing. Expansion back to the warrant article, as a warrant article, but I don't think we, it has to be twenty twenty. Two or twenty twenty, yeah, geez, twenty twenty three. I almost said twenty one. Or twenty twenty four, right? I think we make it known that this is what we're working towards and it's going to come back. But if it's this year or next year, remains to be decided based on. Because I mean, say we go out to the community with this plan. And a proposed price tag or some version of this plan and there is overwhelmingly. Well received, then yeah, the time is right and the town, and we've got the town's support, but. I think first we have to get it out there, have discussions with town, get the buy-in. And then. We decide, you know, we know that the time is right as a board. I think trying to set that deadline and then get the support behind this is going to create a hurdle for us that we don't need to create.
Well, then, then the first question becomes this, are, are we intent on continuing? To proceed with a project at this facility? Without a deadline. Right? Or, or do we want to do what we've seen the fire department do and the police department do, which was lose a bond vote? Drop it for five years until a different body is there willing to pick up the, pick up the pieces and take it out of the swing. Because that's the biggest ques, that's the first question you have to ask yourself, right, is. It died, do we let it sit there dead? Or do we say, okay, no, we're not done with this and we as a body are going to continue working?
I, I think Nate was next. Well, I'm wondering if it's both and. You know, really, because, and, and not say anything disparaging about the folks who are working on the. Iron companies, facilities, but. You know, it, it came to the warrants and then they, they have a plan. And I, I, I think we just need a more formalized plan. Of how we engage the community. To understand, I mean, we, we, we said many things that, that had to happen. We have to. We have to educate about twenty percent of the market. Have to educate, re-educate again about what renovation means and what that looks like. There, there's, there are big education pieces that we obviously. Did, did not work. Not for lack of trying, but probably because of the compressed timeframe. Were unable to make those compelling stories, which goes back to your point, Nate, about. You know, what is the, what are the compelling stories? So. Again, I'm wondering, are we trying to make that decision now or are we? Saying. Like this is cool, this is great that we have now a picture to go along with so many of the things that you heard. When we had our debrief session and asked for live feedback in that meeting. And, and then do we at some point use an, our next work session in order to get. On a, a clear picture of what is a formalized plan? And, and do we need some kind of help in getting ideas about how to formalize the plan? So it has a, it has a timeline as well as. Here, so yes, take these phone boards, we're going to have tabletop cards, people are going to sit at these tables. There are going to be questions on the tabletop cards. We're going to ask them to discuss these issues and what they, what they see, what questions it raised for them. You know. So on, and we're going to take, you know what I'm saying? Like really just try to formalize. The process.
Sort of that extent. Part of what you're saying though is you're not scrapping about having a project, right?
Right.
Okay, so that, I think the first question is, are we committed to bringing, are we committed to continuing with this process?
I, I would say yes, those modulars are going to be dissolving in the next two years. So yeah, we have, we have a time limit, but I think the time limit might be two or three years, not one year, you know, I think.
Right, and so at that point, I'm not trying to pin anything down other than are we going to do what has happened in the past, which is just let it go.
No, I don't think you can let it go.
Okay.
That's what I meant by both and.
Okay.
But the pieces that we carry, it just may not be a warrant. It might not mean that every year it's on the warrant. It, but what it might mean is that every month we have a formalized plan. To put some education and information out to the community about this is what we need. And this is why we need it. And, and these are not wants, these are needs and this is where there is. I think that that is, that's what I'm trying to say. And, and then what will be driving us about when the warrant is ready? Is how much community support we have. Like we actually, we actually picked the warrant time by like. I, I, I think we're there. I think we've got it, I think we've got a tipping point. Let's get it on the warrant.
When, when Facebook brings good news rather than bad news, that's when we're going to pull the trigger.
Or some brand new way of, of interfacing with, as a community. In addition to Facebook. The presence.
Yeah, so secondly, answering your question, yes, I, I fully support continuing this. And I think we know the entire community's support is getting rid of the modules, right? Even the, our staunchest opponents, you know, advocate for, let's just build four classrooms and some bathrooms, right? So. This is close to it. The question I have, and this kind of ties into. To later, but. You know. What is the next step? From here, is it? Starting with this as a talking point, you know, and, and, and taking this plan that Jay's put together? And using that as kind of our, here is the minimum viable product, right? There's not really anything else we can. Take out of the shrink down. Right, this is.
That's, yeah, that's, that's the most, that's the Yankee. Right? That, that's the Yankee set of plans.
Yep, and so, you know, do we, as, as the board? Opt to put this out in, in the public and start, you think this has that conversation piece or, or do we want to change this?
I think, I think. To me, a minimal part of the feedback we got from a lot of people was, well, how come you didn't ask us what we wanted beforehand? How come, how come we weren't? So, but we need something to ask to talk about, right? So I feel like, and I can be wrong. I feel like. You have to show something to say, so what do you think about this? From the first go around. So you've seen what we, you've seen what the board and everybody came back and this is what we, this is what addresses a hundred percent of our needs. That wasn't supported. So this is, this is that minimum viable product. So what do you think about this? And then you may start soliciting feedback and maybe you get feedback that says, well, we think we should include this. You know what the cafeteria really does in the day. Come to the school and let's walk around and show you, you know, okay, and then you create, hopefully. Start generating a little bit, but I certainly think you have to have something to talk about.
I disagree, but I think that's, that's not the sequence. I think the sequence is. That if people aren't aware of the needs, then they don't have a basis to make those decisions about what they want. That are in line with what the school is deciding. And so I would go back to starting with. Educating and free, I would, I would, I think this is awesome, but I think to send this out. This week, next month, whatever it is, I think is too fast. And I would say our first dinner next month. Should be having Chris Motica come in or coming at something where this is what school is. Welcome back to, to DCS. We've been, you know, closed for two years. You know, it's, it's not doing this. It's, it's talking about the community. It's talking about what the school does and, and our role in the community and. Whatever, beginning that education process with our community. And we could be working on this in the background. We could also be working on paving the lot. We could also be working on our subject system. We could be working on our roof. Those are the things we need to do. And the community voted and gave us a million dollars to do that because that's pressing. And we bring this back maybe out in six months after we've met with the community a few times and we've sort of started this kind of education process. And said, this is what we do in this building. This is why these, this plan meets the needs that we have. Because we have to clearly explain the needs, which we haven't done yet in a convincing fashion.
Go ahead, Andy.
I was just going to say, I, I think we might be doing the community members who came to the school and provided feedback to the survey. When we asked for insight, we would be doing them a disservice if we got this feedback from LBA. And we didn't necessarily, we didn't publish it and share it. To validate that we did hear them from, you know, the election. We did consider the in-person dialogue. We did consider survey feedback and we use the. Work in progress, you know, plans or whatever we're going to call them to drive and motivate people. To communicate with us, to come to the sessions that you're talking about, whether it's a spaghetti dinner or a tour around the school. I mean, I, I think that that would be a good way to, to get people to trust us again. You know, as you start to look through the survey results, you'll see that that was a, a comment several times. Transparency as well. So I think if we can share these plans and use them to fuel the conversations that we all agree that we should have. You know, under the, the premise of, you know, communication, I think that would be the right path forward.
Just a couple of things were said, and so I just kind of want to jump up. Um, one of the things, and as you pointed out, a lot of people can't read plans. It's really confusing to them.
I can read them, but.
Well, no, no. Not that you can't, a lot of people can't. So a lot of people just. Don't have, don't under, you know, just don't have the spatial. So to, to give a set of plans, sometimes it's confusing to people. So I think words is a good, good piece to it too. A lot of times, we're trying to get the community engaged, trying to get them to, to understand what we're talking about and trying to get them engaged and things. What we'll do is, we did it with the teachers where we give them, we had thumbs up or thumbs down on images, like what do you think this space should look like, feel like? And we did that, you know, with, with a group of teachers that I think give us some good feedback when we were moving. One way, after they understand the need, one future step might be something called dot accuracy. Where we give community members dots and we put up boards of pictures of spaces so they understand that, you know. If it's a shop space or if it's a family consumer science space or if it's a maker space. Then they can vote and they can kind of give a visual representation of. What they think and feel and they think they want their kids to be in, or they think the community will use for a space. And that's a good. Visual way to engage people and like to feel part in the process, but they're not nitpicking plans they may not understand how they all work. So that's just something to think about. The other thing is, we're talking about, you know, working on this until it finds, finds the right time to put it to the people. The only tricky part with that is I think people are going to want to know the cost. And every year we delay is just going to add numbers to it, which the cost is going to change. I don't know if that's going to frustrate people that you said. Oh, you said this was going to be a twenty five million dollar project. Now it's a thirty one million dollar project. What are you, what are you doing to us? So just, I guess be careful because I know people want to know the number, but that number will change.
I also think. One of the things that the board needs to recall, talking about wanting to have. Accurate information out there. We want to be the source of the information. We've seen these drawings, they're public. If we don't put them out, somebody else can.
I'm not, I'm not saying I don't.
No, but, but I'm, I'm saying from the board though, where if we want to, we want to be the authors of the dialogue, right? We need to, we need to be the authors. And so if, I think for us, it's much better for us to say. Right out of the gate. We're listening to you, we're looking at additional options and discussing things, we want feedback. So here is. Something that was provided to us by LBA is another. Conversation starter or another place for us to solicit feedback. And then it's our message going out. And then it's our message going out, because the subject right now, right? So if we don't put it out, somebody else can.
How, what would, what form would that feedback take? Are you saying post this on Facebook and leave the comments open? Is that what you're saying?
Highly discouraged.
But it stays higher on the feedback.
That's what I'm saying, so it is both and, it is an education piece. If we put this up, framing is everything. So it's how we talk about this. I'm not opposed to putting, I'm not opposed to having a talking point, because I agree that sometimes it's very good to have a talking point, but framing it up and keeping it very clear that we didn't decide to just, okay, negate everybody else's input, and yet again, now we're gonna toss out another plan that we did without feedback. And I guess when I'm hearing you, like, Jay, talk about dotocracy, which I love, because I've never heard it called that, I've used that term a million times, but I've never heard it called dotocracy. I love it. It's, we need a formalized process. We can't just have step one, and step one is like, okay, let's put this out, and let's have, you know, this. I think that we have to have, like, five steps in a row. We, we need to be thinking out, like, what, what is the, and you know, I'm East Zach, so it's the big picture here. But, and, and then I have this terrible West streak, I need a plan. So what is the plan for get, for all of this? We need, I feel we need a formalized plan for all of this. We need a formalized plan to frame this up, and now it's in the public domain. Here's everybody, there's the picture, you know? Uh, it, it was on the board, it's out there. Um, we need a plan to educate. We need a plan to get phone boards out and have people have conversations. But it needs to be a coherent plan with all the, all, everything everybody said needs to be in place and in a plan.
It sounds like the next worst question.
That's where I was headed, and we might need help with that, like, so my question to you, Jay, is I feel like you, you guys come up with really innovative, interesting things. Do you have in your minds, like, this is, this is kind of like seven, seven things you should do along the way?
Unfortunately, no, so it's, every community is different. But I'm, I'm happy to help with you, to, to tell you, you know, what his work in other communities, and we can try to implement some of those things, but your community is obviously different, so I don't have that. These are the steps you take.
Yeah.
But I'm happy to help to try to help you to see that.
Like, my, my intuition tells me there's still a values process and a, and a larger conversation that this town needs to have before any of them comes to fruition, that my gut tells me that. Uh, I don't, I don't have evidence to base that on. And, and, um, I know that there are organizations out there that are willing to help communities do that. Does that slow down the process? Yes, but in the long run, will it, will it help the, and then, will, will that, if we got that higher level of engagement, will that actually make it move faster in the end and be more successful? Maybe.
I, you know, hopping down, you know, two, two items on the, the community dinner, you know, I think what we need to do is get people in this building. And what I would love to see is, first, whether it's our next work session, which is gonna be June, at this point. But I, I'd be happy to plan, and if we can get people in the building, host a dinner, brief comments, introducing why we're hosting this session, why it's there. We could walk people through the building in a very controlled fashion, show them the problems that we have in this building, take them through the good, the bad, and the ugly. And whether it's a dotocracy, or we, we as board members walk around and just converse and talk, and we have everybody, just like at the barbecue, I mean, think about how many people we get at, but, and we all sit behind the grill, but if we go out there and we talk, and we just start getting that feedback, maybe we host in more controlled form at some point during it. You know, because what concerns me about is, is just through my next work session is, it's gonna look like this, and we'll have Tina here, and.
I think Tina's gonna eventually leaving DCS in like a month.
No, I, I, I think.
It's not gonna be in all of these.
I think so, no, it's gonna disappear.
But, but, you know, as far as a concrete plan, I, I do think we, we need one. Um, and even if it doesn't move the ball forward all that far, it begins that community building that we know we need to do. And get used to being back in the school, whether it's the art show last night, biography night, right? All those things, I, I think that we take that opportunity. And, and I think that's where we, in my mind, it would be a perfect opportunity to begin discussion, we walk people into the building, talk about this plan, give feedback. So as far as concrete plans go, that's what I, I would.
Am I allowed to talk? That's up to Zach.
If the board's comfortable with that, I find, you are as much a great in this community as the rest of us are.
Uh, so what, what if we took it as a approach, like, we, we did our homework? We heard, we, we listened to your survey, we, we, we gathered all this information, and just what Jeff is saying, have plans, have some of what Patty was saying. How, how does this new plan affect your tax bill? That's what people wanna know. What, what are we, what are we missing, what, what are, what are, what are we, and, and the modules? Yeah, you know what, this is a plan, we're gonna have the kids here for a period of time, we're gonna show the people how this is gonna, we're gonna accomplish this. But we need to tell the people, yes, we did our homework, we saw, we saw the survey, we saw the votes, and we, we're, we're, we listened to what you said. We are proposing this here based on some of our information, and maybe, maybe we're just getting feedback first in, in June. But let the people know that we, we're hearing what you said, and, and we've done work on this, and this is, this is kind of what we're proposing. And your point, this is why, this, this is the things we've changed, this is how it's gonna affect your pocketbook. That's what people are gonna look at that. And also, we can, we can educate people about the twenty-first century. But have it more of a, yeah, we, we hear what you're saying, and we'd like you to come in and help us. I don't think prices are gonna go down that much. I don't, I don't. I, I mean, just given the world situation and, and what's going on right now, yeah, maybe prices might go down for some aspects of the building, but not all. Because it's still gonna be gasoline-powered stuff that's going to deliver things here, and, and that's gonna be a big, big situation for the next few years, no matter what way you cut it. I don't think it's gonna go down in price. But I do think if we tell the, tell the public, yeah, we heard, we did our homework, we hear what you're saying. And, and then take that approach for the community dinner, have more, have more information here, and, and actually see how much your taxes are gonna be cut by our new plan.
Right before you were gonna say, I was gonna, no, no, right before you started, I was gonna, actually gonna say something similar, and, and when we put it out, to let them know we're working somehow in big lettering on here, post-vote idea number one. And then we just keep it going, like, like, like you said, we did something, this is just number one, but we did, we did our homework, absolutely. Yeah, basically.
Feedback, we're, we're feedback moving, right? But we need somebody to get the feedback on, and I, I, um, I think, I agree that it can all, it can all kind of occur as part of a singular, or part of a process, but I heard a lot from the community that, that we did solicit them for feedback beforehand, and so let's have.
As we go.
Yeah, this is, this is part of that, it's, it's corny to say, but, you know, this is how sausage is made, right? This is it. As far as costs going down, I mean, I know building costs never go down, twenty-twenty, you know, a hundred and twenty-five dollars a square foot, we build a house really well, now it's three hundred. It's never going back down, it's never going back down to two hundred square foot. And, and, you know, building costs in general, once they get there, they stay there. Slight fluctuations here and there, but that counts deep. It's, that becomes the normal, and that's a process, stuff I sell, manufacturers all rolled up, oh, it's a steel surgeon, it's a steel surgeon, chips runs out here, super price, but the price isn't going back down more. It's everything, that becomes the new baseline, and then the only place it closes up, no many factor, no, nothing ever goes down to any. So I don't think you, I don't think you do it with, you have to wait for it to come back down, because you're gonna go up six percent, or eight percent, or ten percent. Talking, paying to the dollars you're talking, you wait four years, this becomes the thirty-five or fifty.
And I, I'm, I'm not advocating waiting for the sake of waiting. I, I just want to have a plan to be sure that we are engaging. And, and it's going to have to be in different ways, if it's going, I, I, I mentioned this at the last meeting. It's going to feel like we are putting things up on a platter, and when I say we, I, I turn my head back, because I, I heard Tina loud and clear say, like, the ETO will be happy to help organize, like, in the, you know, beginning of the year, the, or maybe, and we have one at the end of the year, the, the cookout where the entire town comes, and here are your, you know, here are all the town resources. Um, I, I think that um, I, I'm just concerned that there was so much ill will generated by not taking people into consideration, and we did do our homework, but our homework consisted of a hundred and seventy-six people here, fifteen people that came to a public meeting.
Yep.
And, and, and then whatever we gained from, from legitimate Facebook feedback. Yes, we did our homework, and we're asking, is it okay? What do you think of, of what we've done?
We're asking you to check our work.
Yeah, check our work.
But our work is only based on, what I'm saying, is only based on a hundred and seventy-six people.
You're absolutely right. But if that's all we have to go on right now, for, forget about surveys so much. This, this is cut to the bare bones of what, what we can do to make it work.
Right.
And can you please give us feedback on this? Because you have it really, and we've had it hoping for it, and we really need your feedback now.
Absolutely.
No, I'm not disagree.
No, I know, I know, but I, I know.
I was, I was just worried that the sample, that the feedback size was so small.
I, I think we've done a, a pretty good kind of job, we've talked about, you know, communication's been a big theme of this whole work session, right? It's, it's kind of a preset. I think the community dinner thing, I think this community supper, if I remember, it has to be what, ten, fifteen years since that's really been?
Yeah.
So.
Well, last talent show, I thought, how long ago was that?
That was first off.
That was first.
Well, no, I'm saying for the talent show, we have.
Well, yeah.
In March of twenty-twenty, we had our talent show in.
So if we, I feel like that, when it occurred, and I can't even think of how far back it was, maybe it was fifteen, twenty years? But I feel like that was something that was almost like quarterly that was occurring, am I right?
And I, I know it happened at least twice a year. I remember there were at least, there was probably, I know that there was one in the spring, because I just remember being hot as heck in the gym. Like, oh my god, so hot in here. And, and there probably was another one, like, maybe in, in like early winter, perhaps?
I think, I think moving forward, a, a very good next step for us is to say, and I don't know if we can hit the exact date tonight, but we say, may something, let's have spaghetti supper. And let's reach out to the rest of the people.
Can I say something?
You are as much a valued member of the community.
No, I'm just saying, I'm just thinking, like, um, I was just saying to Gigi, the pasta dinners that we're talking about, that we had ten, fifteen years ago, I feel like those were much more a community, you had people that had no kids and haven't had kids here for a long time. I mean, to those dinners, whereas I feel like the ones we've had before the talent shows are more school families. So, I mean.
You're talking about the whole town coming.
Right, yes, I get the task for like the whole town, I think that's a good story, so.
Or this is a community pasta dinner, happens to be hosted by the school. Come on down and talk to us. Or talk to your neighbor, don't talk to us all, talk to neighbor, have some spaghetti, that's fine.
I do. You need to do at least one of them that doesn't have an agenda, like, that sounds like a huge waste of time, but
I agree.
I think you need to have at least one that doesn't have a model of the new plans, and.
Maybe it can just be a tour, like, come in.
It could just be a come in and talk to you guys.
Someone walk around the building.
Coming to talk to you guys is like real people, not at a meeting, not on a video.
Recognize we're all human.
Just like I used to corner you at, at T-ball meetings, some of the bus stuff, like, just talk to you like a real person, not like, here's our agenda and why we're hosting a dinner. You're not gonna draw people in with an agenda, I, I don't think. Uh, so if we're looking at June, it's gonna be hot for a pasta dinner, and there's a lot, I mean.
What are your rules?
Why are you, why are you funding it? How, why? I, I'm just, and in June, people are busy, so I, I mean, how, how much, how much are we gonna get?
What about an ice cream shop?
Perfect.
Have like a last day of school, like you said, ice cream.
We get fifty, fifty tubs of ice cream, or whatever the, the buckets of them are, and we.
That's much more manageable. Yes.
Yeah, bet it, you're talking to a couple hundred bucks worth of ice cream.
Inside or outside?
Whether, whether to boom.
What about, um?
End and out, whatever.
Twenty, the twenty-seventh of that's more worldly, we can.
I think you can mark that down as another good idea.
Two, and one night, I want you to call my wife.
If we do Friday, May twentieth? I think it's Friday will have a better turnout than, you know.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, that is on a weekend, so.
I think the only thing you can do is just pick a day or another. And we can put something, we can immediately put something else, just Friday, May twentieth, we're gonna have an ice cream shop, we're letting community become a restaurant. Yeah, that's it.
I like it.
We can get, so, but, uh, uh, we'll get buckets of hood and styrofoam bowls and whipped cream and chocolate sauce and have that.
So May twentieth in the evening?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I will, I will be a little bit, but that's okay.
I'll scoop on your behalf.
Scoop, shuck on the left.
So, and I would, I would say that's a great place, and the other benefit to that is, then the ice cream is unused, we've got five hundred kids in the building. Have, have an ice cream party for the kids.
What time do you wanna do it?
What time do we start the cookout?
So are we trying to catch people after work?
Yeah.
So if I'm trying to catch people after work, I think you really wanna be like six or eight, seven o'clock.
Six thirty, seven.
Bring your kids, bring your neighbors, bring the dogs, bring them, whatever, so.
We don't wanna run into the dark.
We, we, I was gonna just say that, you know. And took thirty, if you like, half thirty.
Yeah. It's gonna be buggy. Oh my god.
What'd you say?
It's gonna be buggy.
Oh.
All right, so it.
We'll be a little bit of a breeze, don't worry, it's not like.
I'll bring some D here. Bring you on my ice cream.
What?
You almost killed, yeah.
You haven't been said. All right.
What help can we be?
All of it.
Do you want a little shopping? Do you want, so it's a little terrifying.
So why don't we, why don't we see if we can get the supplies, it's the, the company we buy all of our, um, cafeteria.
Meredith?
Yeah, see if Meredith can get some baby tubs of ice cream. At the, to me, that's easiest one.
Yes.
Six, six thirty?
Six thirty.
Six thirty. Do you need paper products, like?
I think we can round roll that up.
Yes, you can get all that, okay.
I'll have to order something else.
Put your butter tomorrow, but yeah.
But if you ask her if you can pull it all off, you can have the truck drop off the ice cream when they're here with the milk and all that stuff.
Yeah. So why don't we ask her if you can?
We, we, we need to, because that's a fair amount of ice cream that you need to store.
Yeah, I'm not saying we have to get, I think we need to store it, we can get it. She can load it for.
Why don't we just have, why don't we just let Friday morning when I'm here?
Okay.
Maybe we can talk about the best approach, and then we'll reach out to the, and we'll see if you can get some support.
Loving. All right.
So you don't wanna email me right now? Because I was about to. I love, I, the board has another brilliant idea.
I love, I, the board has another brilliant idea.
So ice cream party.
At least she got ordered pasta.
But I think the other part of it is, is, is nowhere agenda other than let's hold the whole building up for everybody to see.
That's all. For sure, it's the whole building.
On the board, that's the big question. You're gonna make shirts? Yeah, my cricket machine. Make shirts. Among the schoolboys.
So let's, let's start with that. We can finalize any details at our next meeting. We'll have another meeting before that. So we can finalize any details. Hey, if you wanna, when you do your school board notes, if you wanna start just saying, hey. Here we go, we want people, let's get it in the bridge, let's get it out. Like I said, let's just open the building up and, and welcome the community back.
What are you gonna call it? Ice cream social.
I like that.
I liked Andy's thought of saying, pray tonight, here's the ice cream we're talking.
In small print. Flyer.
Or by DCS, so yes. Everyone will.
I think it's that DCS, and that's where it gets DCS ice cream social, and it is, or it's not the school, it's ice cream social, it's a DCS ice cream social. Time wide community.
Work up a flyer and.
Cool. Not that everybody didn't have enough stuff to do before the five, but I sat down and created.
Sometimes on Sundays on board.
Are you?
I would, yeah.
That like half hour free time you get away, alright. As long as I don't work. Alright, um, we do, we certainly have some other stuff that's still to be done. Um, and we're getting along in this meeting, so I don't know if we are ready to start. I think one of the things why you're here, we need to talk about this. You know, we need more business unit stuff, our subject system. Did everybody, you put Chris's email?
Yes.
So everybody had a chance to.
Kathy, someone, did you get one from Kathy?
I think she sent them today. Cause they were just his email updates, so you saw what he was saying.
Uh, so it appears both lead beds, after they ran the cameras up through them, are in a state of failure. So we're currently on all the tanks. Basically as necessary, which we have in this. Uh, one of the things that. We talked about earlier, um, that was far as I mean, I was talking about this with, uh, some people know. On security is check this. So we can search that, which Jason, I'll, we can run outside and see if there was any internal.
Yeah, ask you to use your, uh, adult voice, that would be helpful.
Oh, sorry. Uh, so that's one thing we need to address, it appears that we're gonna be replacing the entire system, at least of all. So realistically, from a timing standpoint, it's gonna. You're working to get an engineer on board that can help design it and load out the system properly and, and that's. Um, but it's one of the things that. More so.
Does it make sense to start, you, you're gonna need to book a contractor, because that's a big job and.
We can't get an RFP until we have plans for this bid. So we need to.
You have to have the design completely done.
Unless you do like, because you couldn't bid, this is a team out of the job, could you?
No.
No, so yeah, we're. We're gonna be up against a rock in a hard place. We're also gonna be decimating that field and taking, we're knocking out a baseball field. I'm thinking, unless we roll style.
Yeah, I'm just very worried about the amount of money that we're gonna need to spend. That million dollars isn't gonna get, between the field, the fire alarm system.
So.
Roof repairs.
In a very broad and not entirely like detailed sense. Talking to a site contractor, I know. Yep, as friends, and I was just talking about the kind of, we were experiencing. And I said, you know, what are your thoughts? And says. For a school, you know, building that size, big, big number, two, two and a half.
Okay.
Somewhere around there, again.
Million? What'd you say, two and a what?
Two hundred thousand.
Okay, yeah, that's, that's a thirty minute competition that's going to happen, but. I think one thing we're gonna need to figure out how we wanna address, and we need to figure it out relatively quickly. We know we need to get insurance done, going, dealt with for your RFPs, anything we can do to accelerate that process, please. But. We need to determine if we're gonna try to pull that money out of our system fund balance. So that we're not getting into million dollars that we can want for the roof and the fire alarm system. Or if we're going to, it's all the same money at the end of the day, right?
If you wanna use fund balance, you have to have it scheduled to be done before June thirtieth. You don't have to spend the funds, but you have to have it scheduled to be.
So we have a very tight timeframe. And the RFP process, when the engineering's done, still needs to get such a, easy approval statement, hopefully we get accelerated because it's a school with a current situation. And they get somebody scheduled. That's gonna be a huge part of the RFP is can you start to complete the project in this. The only follow-up adder to that is, is you know, we are going to. We're, we're gonna lose the baseball. Season. Soccer, baseball, those sports. Destinated. My objective in this is we're gonna do this, is to make sure that we're only doing it once, we can say. And grease traps, if we do, we don't have them, we can do a rest. Size it properly, um, one of the other comments that's made me by a gentleman I was talking to was what the systems use or not use. How can that? Not gonna share his input line yet, but there, there's methods he said that are more durable online. Should try to lean to that, but I want the engineer to do the engineering, discuss it afterwards.
Jeff, the other, um, things that keep popping in my head are, have we had any feedback from the fire marshal?
I have a call with fire marshal tomorrow, so I've had, he was on vacation last week. Not the fire marshal, but the. Plan review. Deputy, yes.
The guy.
The guy. So I may have a call with him tomorrow at eight AM, so I hope you have some feedback.
If, if that plan's all set, we should get that RFP drafted and published. Did we give Jay to go ahead last two weeks ago to? And then the group, we were gonna have Keith get his contractor up there to take a look and see it. He had any thoughts, has he done that yet?
He is not, he said next week he'll have something later.
Okay.
I think he definitely does three things. The fire alarm panel, I certainly think, not panels, sorry, the fire alarm system, that is a sound project. Obviously, if we ever replace the leads, we have one or another. Say project, and the roof, I think is probably a spill over next summer, I'm guessing.
Please leave, so we need to get repaired, we have active leaks right now.
So there's repairs.
And then there's.
Right, so I think, I think from a repair standpoint, that's one thing, but I think the ultimate plan is to replace it. I think we need a plan for that to be a net sum of project. And no matter what, it sounds like. I'm a little bit, it's gonna cost us to. Go under us or another, so we can probably start trying to get that. To the most pressing fire alarm system, obviously, it's the system, so.
We can get the fire project lined up and scheduled and pulled back from the fund balance? If we can pull that together faster than the leak.
Whatever you can pull together faster, you know, and I don't know that we'll know that until.
Until we get there. The fire alarm shit, I mean, as long as we need to go, fire marshal, that's pretty much ready to go out.
Correct, I straightened it out, so.
Yeah. So what's the rough cost of that? Two, four, six?
Four, five, no, yeah. Two, four, okay, great, yes. So let's, um. I guess for you, as you get feedback, if you shoot out the fatty and. And then if we can, uh, hopefully, uh, get some bids on the street, get some responses back, so we can make decisions on stuff.
You again.
Yes, thank you, Jay.
You know what you're getting into.
It's a band of squirrels. Alright. Anything else before Jake? Okay, Jay, thank you very much.
Yeah. Interesting.
Yeah. Alright, um. So I think we can cross off survey, LBA, communicate, community dinner, we've satisfied the first waiver that, for now. Communication, are we comfortable crossing that off of this? Okay, town planning, we wanna tackle that tonight, we wanna, I think we should actually let Nate. Nate try to see where he can get the planning board. Fair enough.
Yeah.
Okay. That brings us to board goals, and then we have non-publics.
I have one informational item. Is that, I know there's no information on here, but.
No information?
No, I know, I don't see it as, as part of the work session, I just thought I just, and, and maybe it's. Makes more sense on the next agenda, it's short.
I'm gonna ask the board if they've been willing to do board goals, date location. Because the stuff we have to talk about non-public is probably.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
We all go to that, Andy, you okay with that?
Uh, yeah, and that was just to, was it table board goals, location format?
Yeah.
Yeah, and we'll deal with it in two weeks.
Okay.
Alright.
I, I, I just, I won't be here.
Okay.
I, I think I, I put that out, I just, did you guys get that email?
Yeah.
CRB meeting, I'll be here.
I just wasn't processing.
Well, the problem, yeah, the problem is if you're gonna find a date for the board goals, you need Gigi's.
Yeah.
So we, can we come up with a tentative date? Or if there's a date range, but you know you're gone, if you just pass it on, we can. Yeah, um, because we need to do this on public, per an HR segment, twenty-three, two, one, R S K, C, a flipper motion on holiday.
Moved.
Back up. Moved by Gigi, second by Nate, roll call, Gigi.
Yes.
Uh, Jeff.
Yes.
Yes, myself, yes, Andy.
Yes.
Alright, it is, uh, nine oh five, we're going into non-public. Tina, thank you for visiting with us.
And you.
Okay, I'll jump with you and Jeff, please.
Okay.
Yeah, yes.
Uh, that doesn't show anybody in the.
Nobody's in the lobby.
What do we have to do when we come out? We're recording right now.
I'm sorry, it's nine forty-five, we've come out of non-public, we're back into the public meeting. Nate, go ahead.
Move to accept the staff resignations.
Five.
Yeah.
Eight, seconded by Jeff, Gigi.
Yeah, with deep and regret.
So we have a motion to accept the staff resignations with our regrets, um, discussion. Favor. I'll look for a motion to adjourn. We'll have a second. Yes, move by Gigi, seconded by Jeff, on favor.
Aye. Bye, Andy.
Bye, Andy.
Thank you, thanks everybody, bye-bye.